Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order today. It's Thursday, May 4th, 2017. It is just about 8:30 a.m. We're in the Community Center Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street. We're also streaming on the Internet, and I believe we're on some TV channels. If you have cable, I think. Cable. And so can we have a roll call, please, for the record?
Sure. Good morning. Supervisor Bout, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Barrett, Mayor Crowell.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you, Sue. All right. Can we call on our good friend Mark Seer from Salvation Army to get us started on the right foot today? Good morning, Mark. How are you?
Our God in heaven, Father, we thank you for our city supervisors and our mayor and other leaders that are gathered here today. Help guide them as they seek to determine the future and direction of our city. Lord, I ask your blessing and strength to be on each of them. Give them wisdom and understanding. Help them see clearly the needs of our city and its people. Help them lead with unity of vision and unity of spirit. Strengthen them together with integrity, helping them to always seek and find the direction you would take them. Father, we pray these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
All right. This is a time for public comment. We take public comment now and take public comment at the end. We take public comment generally through every, each item of the agenda. Ms. Tingle, Hope Tingle, how are you doing this morning?
I'm ornery. How are you?
Oh, you know, I never ornery. Come on, you're always well spoken and always got interesting things to say. So we're interested to hear what you have to say. Good morning.
Oh, dear. Okay. Well, first of all, I'm going to start out with a couple of brags. My nephew, Noah Jennings, was elected the Western Regional Vice President of the Children of the American Revolution. So he did really great back in DC.
And they're having a... They have a conference already?
It was in Washington, DC, two weeks ago.
Well, make sure you pass on our... You know, we've all watched Noah grow up from a little kid, you know? Now, now we look at him, okay? So go on, I'm sorry.
And then he also completed 40 hours of sheriff's mounted posse training. So he... Those are my two brags. I just love the kid. And actually, what I want to talk about today is I remember the good old days, you know, like three or four years ago, when my water bill during the wintertime was $25 average. So I have my water bill. This last water bill is $68.96. So that's without the storm water rate increase that is going to be voted on and I assume passed. But I just kind of am missing that period of time when you could look toward the wintertime and your water bill was somewhat reasonable. And $68.96 for a very limited use of water during the wintertime is like ouch. And now we're getting into the irrigation period where everybody goes out and waters their lawns. And I understand the reason the rate increase was approved was because we were in a drought. People had reduced their water consumption and the utility company had... was suffering a shortfall in revenue because of the decrease in use.
Actually, that's not correct.
No? Okay. What was the reason for...
I don't mean to stop you. I mean, you're welcome to say what you want. You're welcome to say what you want. But the rate increase was put in five years ago before, you know, at the beginning, we didn't even touch this drought. And it was in because we had problems, you know? Our sewer system was failing and we had issues with the Safe Frinking Water Act in terms of complying with getting uranium and arsenic out of the water.
Okay.
And so it was a five-year plan. It had nothing to do with conservation.
Okay.
But so I just want to let you know that...
That's fine. I appreciate the clarification.
And we also made some changes at that rate study, which was done by an outside third party about, you know, how to try to level these rates out between winter and summer months. It wasn't in effect before. And I could get you the rate study. I don't know if you were there when we passed that, but it was...
I was.
Okay. Well, you know, go back and take a look at that one and, you know, we can discuss what they did there or what we did too.
Yeah. Well, I'm puzzled, though, if it was based on a rate study because you're trying to even the rates out between summer and winter.
No. It wasn't done like... Wasn't trying to even them out. That was just an ancillary benefit.
Benefit.
Benefit, or whatever you want to call it. But the major reason was it was to fund the sewer upgrades and the water upgrades and also to put some money in the depreciation or the pay-as-you-go account so we didn't have to keep coming back. That's a five-year plan. July 1st, we're starting the last year of that, and that's it. And we have consistently said we will not be raising rates because of conservation.
Okay.
And we've said that for the last two years.
Since it's a five-year plan, after the five-year period is up, will the rates be rolled back to...
The rates will probably stay in existence because you use those to bond the $30 million-plus water transmission line, which was not to get water, but to bring clean water from our... from sources we had in Minden to blend here so that we avoided a $40 million uranium and arsenic treatment plant building here and also to upgrade the sewer system. Those were bonding situations. So I wouldn't look for those rates to go down, but they're not going to go up either.
No. I wasn't ever expecting anything that is increased to ever be decreased.
Actually, you know, while we're talking about that, you and I know each other, so I could say this.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, we dropped the property tax rate by 14 cents over the last... So, you know, that's one where it was decreased. Sometimes we don't see these things happening, but that was dropped by 14 cents.
Okay. I don't remember seeing that reduction on my property taxes, but that's...
Well, that's the other problem is because, and not to belabor this, the property tax cap with the abatement amount can only... You can only make certain limited adjustments in that. Therefore, when you see increases or decreases, you're not going to necessarily see it in a big way on your tax bill. But that doesn't alleviate the fact that this board, this board, dropped the property tax rate 14 cents per hundred.
And I appreciate that.
Okay. So we know...
We're good.
Okay.
No, I'm just, I'm just kind of... The $67 a month water bill in the wintertime is, you know, just like... So, and I'd love to stay to see how you vote on the storm water rate, knowing full well, but that's okay. But I have to go to work at my part-time job so I can pay my water bill. Have a good meeting.
Hope, you're always... And thank you for letting us talk here a little bit. You're always articulate and I know what you're saying when you're paying your winter water rate.
Yeah.
I got you. Thanks. All right. Say hello to Noah, too. All right. All right. Other public comment? Anybody? All right. I don't see any, so we'll close off this level, this agenda item on public comment. But again, we take public comment at the end and during the agenda items themselves. So let's take the minutes, item six, the minutes of April 6th, 2017. Have you had a chance to look at those? Motion's in order.
So I move to approve the minutes of April 6th, 2017 with the correction under item number 19 to remove some duplicate words. I second that.
There's a motion, a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, six of us, by saying aye. Posse nay. Carried unanimously. Okay. On item seven, the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Board members, any changes? Okay. We're going to try it. We want to make the Fallen Officers Memorial Ceremony at 1 o'clock today, so we will be making that whether we're done or not. And if we're not done, we'll take a break. We'll go over there, participate, and then we can come back here if we need to. But we're going to try and finish this morning if we can. If we can't, so be it. Okay? All right. I'd like to ask now if the board, if we could all come down on the floor here and we'll do some nice things on special presentations. This is a special time of day on our board meetings where we do recognize as special events going on and special people and are including our employees. I'd like to start this morning's presentation, special presentations off with a proclamation for Bike Month. And I'd like to have Kelly Clark and Randy come up, please, if you could, and join me up here. And you'll find out who these folks are here in a minute. Kelly's the president of Muscle Powered. But, okay, this is Bike, this is Bike Month, and it reads as follows. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, and convenient and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Carson City's scenic beauty. And whereas Carson City recognizes bicyclists as legitimate roadway users who are therefore entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roadway facilities in Carson City. And whereas Carson City recognizes the use of bicycles as a viable mode of transportation, endeavors to promote safe and responsible bicycling, and is committed to incorporating a continued development of bicycle infrastructure through the implementation of the Complete Streets concept. And whereas Carson City has been designated a Bronze Level Bicycle Friendly City by the League of American Bicycles. Hooray. Okay. All right. And whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, grow the economy, attract tourism dollars, improve traffic safety, reduce pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on the streets and roads. And whereas Carson City is committed to the inclusion of bicycle facilities as part of the vision for revitalizing Carson City. And whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Carson City will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, commuting events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride like many of us did this past Tuesday. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of all of us, including our Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2017 as Bike Month in Carson City and hand this to you, Kelly. And as President of Muscle Powered, I'd like to thank you folks for putting on the bike ride to kick it off. And then let's see what you have to say. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate your support, and we really support, appreciate the support of the board. And a number of you did come out and ride the celebrity ride. And I just want to make one safety comment and actually a little style comment as well. Our city manager was there with a helmet hanging off the front of his bike. And, you know, I know some people do worry about helmet hair. That's why Randy has this style hair and I have this style hair. But I didn't notice Karen Bout had any problems. She had a helmet on, so... Thank you all very much for your support of Muscle Powered and for our efforts. And I just want to thank Randy Gah. He is, has been an outstanding board member. This guy started Trash Mob in Carson City, and you can see what a difference it's making. I would like to ask you all to give a big round of applause for Randy and Trash Mob. And he's done a phenomenal job on our board handling everything. This year, he stepped up to secretary, and he's also handling Bike Month. So if you ever say to yourself, "I don't have time to volunteer," talk to Randy and he'll figure out how to get that time management thing working for you.
All right. We're going to go up here. Come on. We're going to get a picture taken. You want to put your helmet on and come up and join us?
[laughter]
Leadership by example. I think next we have Historic Preservation Month. Who's going to be helping me with this one? Hope? Mike? Okay. Come on up. Boy, you got a whole stack there, right? Okay. How do you want to do this?
You read it. Michael will present the awards and I'll read my article.
All right. So you want me to read the proclamation first? All right. This is a proclamation for Historic Preservation and Archaeological Awareness Month, May 2017. It reads as follows. Whereas historic preservation and archaeological awareness are effective tools for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation and archaeological awareness are relevant for communities within, across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of the board and our community, do proclaim May 2, 2017 as Historic Preservation and Archaeological Awareness Month and call upon the people, the good people of Carson City, to join their fellow citizens across Nevada in recognizing and participating in this special observance. So, Michael, you're going to do that, all right? I'm going to leave this here for you, all right? And give this to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for once again proclaiming this Historic Preservation and Archaeological Awareness Month. And thank you and to the board for taking this time once again to recognize those in Carson City who take the time and make the effort to maintain the fabric of our great historic community. We've got, as usual, the Historic Resources Commission has selected some recipients for our annual Historic Preservation Awards. This year, we have two properties in the historic district and one person who has really exemplified what preservation means in Carson City. Our first award goes to Jim and Margaret DiArietta for their house at 216 Mountain Street. Any of you who have walked Mountain Street have seen this house. It's one of the most beautiful houses on the street. It's a 1936 bungalow, one of the few we have in the historic district. It's been kept up impeccably. It's really a beautiful house. They do a great job keeping it together. They're not here today, but we'd like them to accept this award for their work at that Our next award goes to Jim and Coleman Warren. A lot of you remember this property. About two years ago, I think, around Halloween, we were actually pretty concerned that it was going to be a huge safety hazard for the trick-or-treaters. It was rundown. It was... I took a tour through it and it was scary. Jim Warren bought it, put... He and his son Coleman put a whole lot of effort into rehabbing it. It's a beautiful property now. It enhances the neighborhood around it, and we would like to thank him for all his effort and all the time that he has put into that building. Jim, could you come up and accept this?
You can. You talk, I'll give it to you. Go by there every day. I'm out at the street.
Thank you very much. Should I read this?
Sure. This reads, "The 2017 Carson City Historic Preservation Award to James Warren in appreciation of his outstanding contribution to Carson City's historic preservation of the property located at 603 West Robinson Street and his commitment to preserving the state of Nevada's valuable resources. It's a wonderful job, James."
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Want to say anything?
No.
I bow to thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Do you want to assist on the behalf?
Sure.
You want to get a photo?
Yeah, we need a photo. Come on.
I just...
Jim?
Jim. Photo. Photo. The board wants a good photo. You look at this beautiful home, and yeah, it's a lot of work, and you can't imagine how much work. Jim and Coleman were there every single day for two years, seven days a week. Jim took a week off each year for his son's bicycle ride. But they started with the foundation and something that needed to be leveled, bulldozed. When Mike says it's scary, that's an understatement. And being the next-door neighbor, I cannot thank the Warrens enough for what they did. This is not a usual historic preservation thing. And thank you guys and thank everybody for giving them this award.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, behind every successful construction project, there's somebody who does the heavy lifting. Those are the engineers. Collis Huntington, Leland Stanford, Mark Hopkins, and Charles Crocker financed the Central Pacific Railroad. Theodore Judah built it. William Sheeran, Thomas Bell, William Ralston, J.D. Frye, and Darius Ogden Mills in 1868 built the Virginia and Truckee Railroad or financed it. Henry Yarrington built that. Forty-three years after the last train hit or arrived in Carson City at 10:15 on the May 31st, 1950, the Tri-County Railroad Commission was formed and found financing to reconstruct the VNT Railroad. Like Theodore Judah and Henry Yarrington, Ken Door built it. I had the pleasure of working with Ken, both during the planning and construction of the I know he won't take credit for all the work he did, but I can attest that the railroad wouldn't have been reconstructed without him. Ken, if you'd like to come up, as the mayor said, they have a peace officers meeting at 1 o'clock, so if you could keep this kind of short...
I brought this just in case you need it. I could set it for...
You need the Red Green Light, the NDOT Scotts.
I was going to bring the band in to do the music, but anyway, Ken, thank you.
You know, and let me just say, and I know I'm speaking for all of us on the board, and I've been on the VNT Railroad Commission for some time now, and I couldn't say much more than what Mike said. This railroad wouldn't be built without you, Ken. I mean, every meeting I go to, you're just always out there. And you know, when we run into financial issues, you're always willing to, you know, donate something or, you know, try and cut it down here or there, but always with an eye on making sure that the safety of that railroad is paramount. And, you know, the community should know, you know, a lot of people have done a lot of things for that railroad over the years. You're one of the top people that's helped make that a reality here, Ken. So I couldn't be more proud to, you know, honored to present this to you. And it reads as follows. An appreciation to Ken Door, an appreciation of his outstanding dedication and extensive contribution to the Virginia and Truckee Railway Reconstruction Project as part of Carson City's historic preservation and his commitment to preserving the state of Nevada's valuable resources. I couldn't think of anybody more deserving, Ken. It's good. All right. And your daughter there. Where's Susan? You got to get a picture up here with us.
And my wife needs to come also.
Oh, come on, come on. Family up here. Come on.
Don't I get to babble for a minute?
Yeah, you get to babble. Come on.
You can babble as much as you want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Supervisor, so much.
When we awarded Ken this honor, one of the conditions that the historic commission put on it was that he only talk for a short period of time, because Ken will talk for a long period of time.
Go ahead.
Short is relative. Again, I was just one person on this entire project, and I'd like to accept this award on behalf of many, many other individuals that have worked on this project, some living, some no longer with us. And I'm going to bore you with a couple of those names, which you may or may not recognize. There's one or two I don't think you'll probably recognize. There are too much. First and foremost, my wife Sharon for putting up with me on this thing for almost 30 years now. And you have to come up for the picture, too.
Come on, Sharon.
Bob and Tom Gray, obviously, there wouldn't be a railroad unless they'd built the track down to Gold Hill. Ron Allen, VNT Historic Society. Ray Maseko, obviously, had a lot to do with this. Kim Feig and his father. Bob Hadfield, John Tyson. Mike Rowe, who's still our general counsel for the railroad, has put in countless hours at either reduced or free rate doing legal services. He was responsible for acquiring over, way over 100 different parcels we had to get for various easements to get this thing built. Granite Construction Q&amp;D, while they worked on two major phases of the project, they've also donated and continue to donate significant resources and time and money to this project. So what they've done is great. This guy right here's done a little bit. Mike Drew's on the project. Carson City Public Works, Darren Schultz, Danny Roder, Curtis Horton have helped a little bit. I think the sheriff even has a little bit here, too, but...
And Susan Dorfansky.
Well, she might actually be on my list. I said right below that was Susan Pansky, so...
All right. Well, you got to talk about her.
Yeah. Well, we drug her back east on a fundraising opportunity, deal here a few years ago, but we didn't get any more money, but at least it was a fun trip to go back and see our congressional delegation, so... Pat Witten, Jack McGuffey, Story County. Dwight Malard, of course, is our current chairman, and he's probably the one that's really responsible for getting this operation up and running. I just sort of built things and he got things running. Candy Duncan is obviously still on board and doing a whole lot. Now, Gary Luce, a few of you guys may not know him, but Gary's been involved with this project as long as I have. Without Gary, I don't think we would have got a whole lot of this thing done. Gary, in particular, for his work on Tunnel Number Two, which is the probably largest and quite frankly, most costly historical preservation effort we had on this entire project. Gary, now we figured we lost five years over that project reopening Tunnel Number Two. I wanted to daylight it or go around it, and Gary said, "I think we can make it work." And it was absolutely a mess. Dynamited shut, 565-foot, was very challenging, very costly, and quite frankly, very dangerous. I guess now at this point, we came about 10 feet from actually losing a person when we were doing the rehabilitation. That's never been made public because it didn't happen, thank God. Last, there's a lot of people who are no longer with us that worked on this project. Mike Donovan, our surveyor in Silver City, provided all of his database and worked on the project, probably for just a fraction of what it would cost. We never would have been able to figure out where we're at without Mike. John Flanagan, supervisor from Story County. Kevin Ray, longtime project coordinator for the Railroad Commission. We missed a whole lot, but he put a lot in this effort. And the last two, Janice Ayers, she worked on this project undyingly, if you will. So she still is, I guess. You know, Janice could call up, they say, "Well, she never really raised much money directly," but she could call up Harry Reid and he'd call her back in five minutes. So I don't have that capability. I don't even think the mayor does.
Not anymore, for sure.
Even back in the day there. So, and so she was a big help. And last but not least is our Bulldog, Marv Texera. Marv and I first got involved in this project back in the early '90s. Actually, probably about '93, when the Intermodal Surface Transportation Efficiency Act, IST, passed, and there was a little category called enhancement funds. And one of those enhancement funds was the preservation and restoration of historic transportation facilities. So Marv dragged me over to the State Transportation Board to basically pound on those folks to see if we could get some money. And lo and behold, because just anything to get rid of Marv, they gave him a million dollars of federal dollars, which of course kicked in all of the environmental things, which brought him on board and one of the other things. But without Marv, through the years, we never would have got here. And I certainly miss him very much. Not that we didn't argue, because we did. But, you know, I think one of his last presentations to this board was to ask for continued support for the VNT. It is a resource. It's cost a lot of time and a lot of effort. I think we still have some work to do. We have right of way down into Carson River Canyon, which we just need funds to be able to get that. Hopefully, at some point in time, we'll be able to complete that project. And I think it's quite frankly, an unappreciated resource of Carson City. It's not something every day you get to operate and rebuild and operate this. And I'm going to shut up now. Thank you so much.
You don't have to shut up, Ken.
Actually, I think what you've just heard is a remarkable testament about all the people who have been involved in getting this train to go. So, Ken, thank you for sharing all those names and that information. And now let's go up and get a picture. Michael, come on up here. Susan, do you want to have... Come on up, too.
She had to put up with me, too. My wife and my daughter.
Ken, need to have your plaque.
Oh, okay. I got my notes, come on. I got your plaque.
Smile.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Good job.
My pleasure.
My pleasure.
Good job. All right. We actually did this out of sequence.
I should've had...
That's okay.
I'm gonna ask Sean to come up. Could I have our fire chief come up? Got lots of people in blue here today. That's great. All right. I know you guys said, "Hey, did he forget about us? You're looking on the agenda." We didn't forget. You know, sometimes, you know, last is not necessarily bad. Okay, this is a proclamation for Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month 2017. It reads as follows: "Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being," and I think we've seen some of that around this community, "whereas homeowners should ensure proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition, and whereas residents can save precious time in an evacuation by preparing a to-go bag and family evacuation plans ahead of time, and whereas communities should create well-designed fuel breaks, ensure good access for emergency vehicles, and consider multiple evacuation routes, and whereas residents should evacuate immediately when asked by emergency responders. Now, therefore, I, Robert Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of the Board, support May 2017 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month and this year's theme, Wildfire Prepare, Anticipate, Evacuate, as a means for education and a call for residents of Carson City to take action to reduce the wildfire threat and prepare their homes, families, and community for wildfire, anticipate a possible evacuation, and to evacuate their homes when asked." And I have Chief Slaman here. Chief, I'd like to give you this, and I want you to talk a little bit about the importance of it. I know you introduced your folks here. Carson City's been no stranger to wildfires. You know that, and all of us in this room know that, so...
Thank you, Mayor. So with me today is Jamie Royce-Gomes of the organization Living With Fire, and then I also have Rod Rumel and our Fire Marshal, Dave Rubin, with me. We are blessed to live in a community that is essentially one with Mother Nature. We have the Sierra Nevadas just to our west, and then we have a tremendous amount of open land. But with that comes a little bit of responsibility, and that's being prepared for wildfire and the other things that Mother Nature tends to throw at us. And so while we're enjoying a little heat up, it's a reminder that summer is around the corner and that we need to be prepared. Prepare our properties and be prepared if we do have a major wildfire in our area, that you can evacuate safely and you have all the necessary items. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Jamie, and she has some more information for us.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Board of Supervisors for this proclamation. Wildfire threatens Nevada and communities almost every year, and the result means the destruction of property, the loss of homes, and sometimes the loss of human lives. And so, in response to that, oh, actually, the key to minimizing and surviving wildfire impacts is for residents to remain informed as well as proactive. And so, in response to that, then, the local, state, federal firefighting agencies within Nevada, and also University of Nevada Cooperative Extension have banded together and promoted the Nevada Wildfire Awareness message since 2006. And so this year, our theme is Wildfire Prepare, Anticipate, Evacuate. And so residents can prepare by creating defensible space, knowing their family evacuation plan. They can anticipate wildfire by monitoring environmental conditions. They can check their to-go bag, assemble disaster supply kit, and they can evacuate quickly and safely when asked to by emergency responders. And so we actually have a little swag item for the Board of Supervisors. Oh, I'll have Rudd. Rudd, be my Vanna White. And so these are bandanas, and they also have an evacuation checklist on there. So if you are in an emergency and you need to evacuate quickly, you can take a look at that, use that bandana to help protect you from the smoke, make sure not to wet it, just make sure that it's dry when you evacuate, but... So thank you. You know, you're not. I actually learned that. It's bad for your lungs. The steam is bad.
I learn something today.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
All right, let's go up here and get a picture, and then...
We'll make sure that we give a good promotion during the month here and all around the year, so... Now, we're gonna move on to... We ready? Oh, ready? We're gonna move on to Item 8D. This is a presentation and update of the accomplishments of projects by Cassie. And Lisa, Lisa Shute is gonna do this. Welcome to Cassie. You got a whole bunch of folks there you wanna...
Do I need to press this?
Yeah.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, and everyone, and we appreciate being put on the agenda. First of all, I just wanted to come and present to you, let you know the latest projects that Cassie is working on, and actually, one that we have just recently completed. And, but first of all, you know, Cassie, we've only been around for four and a half years, and a lot of great things have happened, and they've happened because of amazing volunteers. We are 100% volunteer, and, you know, there's something going on all the time. And so we have a couple of our wonderful volunteers here right now. Chuck Crittenden, Linda McKenzie, Robin Pont, and Bradley Harris, and Lucy Lamont. And so what we're doing, we're building shelter, building community, and finding solutions. And so really, about Cassie, you know, initially, we were created to help raise money to build the shelter, and now we are dedicated to helping equip the shelter, and also now reaching out and supporting programs to reduce animal suffering. And just a couple critters, all right. Current projects, we have the installation of our new play yard. Thus far, the contracting and the what we've paid for fencing, grading, moving gates, $23,000. And we are now equipping it with benches and a ramp. We have a dog pool and a toy box, and so that's about another $2,500. And I do wanna thank Green Lizard Landscaping and Florence Fence. Drew Blank there, for the amazing work. So just some of the projects there. And also Peter Kruger, he delivered a couple of fire hydrants. And Mayor Crowell and Mrs. Bagwell, you were there, which we sure appreciated that amazing donation.
Yeah, that was from AVK. AVK Company, and Kruger was the messenger, and I think Lori set it up, and I have to... I was gonna carry those fire hydrants, and I figured, nah, you know what?
One on each arm, right?
Yeah. I did that, one on each arm, that's right.
See, I witnessed it. And now it's playtime. Dogs are in there, dogs are using it, and, you know, really, what helps animals be adopted from shelters is when they are calm and joyful and friendly. And imagine being locked up in a kennel, even when you're cared for, even when you're fed and you have bedding, it's just not the same if you don't have interaction. We've all had cabin fever, this winter especially. Folks have just kind of been over being locked inside. Imagine animals. And so the biggest idea behind this play yard is to get these dogs adopted, and part of that is keeping them socialized, keeping them exercised, and happy to be with people and other animals. So we're really thrilled about that. And then we also are working on a low-cost spay and neuter program for low-income pet owners. It is called the Cassie Critter Fixer, and we are going to kick that off, actually, in the next couple of days. And so part of the letter that will be going out to people who qualify, "Thank you for making the decision to help reduce the number of homeless pets and overpopulation of animals by applying for assistance to get your pet or pets spayed or neutered." And so we are enclosing a voucher, and we sent out invitations to local veterinarians, and we are so thrilled that Lone Mountain Veterinary Hospital and Quail Ridge Animal Hospital are interested in working with us. And how this will work, qualified people will pay a small amount for a voucher, and then Cassie will pay the remainder of the cost. And so then, finally, we have student outreach. And really, part of what's so important with Cassie, and something that I know all of the volunteers are most proud of, is outreach and the bridge building. We work with leadership groups. We provide education, team building, help with senior projects, and really promote volunteerism. Sometimes it goes well, sometimes it doesn't, in terms of kiddos don't quite know what they're getting into. It's one thing to volunteer, and yet we're really, it's difficult sometimes to work with homeless animals, and it's a time commitment. But what we're doing is we're planting the seed. And just in two weeks, I'll be at Empire Elementary. Every year, they fill up a piggy bank. These are second and third graders, and they are so happy to be a part of helping the shelter. Then in middle school, I see them again in a leadership project. These are kids who are learning that you can contribute to your community, and that's what it's about, whether it's helping people, helping animals. That's the beauty of it. And so one wonderful group, Eagle Valley Middle School, the Jedi Engineers, I'm sure you've read about them, they met with us very early on in the plan, because the theme was animal allies. And so we talked about different programs, different ways to help animals, shelter animals or even animals out in the wild. And kids were coming up with different prototypes. In this case, they're presenting to shelter staff about kennels and being able to make them larger, more adaptable, doors that open up to provide more room within the smaller kennel spaces. So if, let's say, there's an opening, or there's a kennel next to one in particular that's empty, how we can maybe start figuring out a way to open up so it's a larger kennel. And they're thinking about this, so wonderful engineering project. There was even a group of kiddos who were creating prosthetic shark fins to offset shark fin soup. You know, the horrors of what some human beings do, and these are kids now thinking in terms of compassionate solutions, instead of just saying how horrible it is. And then we have just some more students, a young man who showed up at our pooch plunge taking pictures, senior projects, we've worked with Rainbow. The one up in the corner was Concert for the Critters, another senior project where they actually gave a concert at Carson High School. We have students painting piggy banks to fill, and of course, helping at adoption events. And so really, we at Cassie truly would like to help everyone in our community. We could not have accomplished so much without the amazing support of this community, and the willingness for people to share ideas, even folks who didn't quite agree with building a new shelter, have since found that this is important for everyone. And we really encourage ideas and coming together for solutions that meet everybody's needs. And I am just so thrilled to be a part of such an amazing group of people, and I am so appreciative, and I know everyone else is as well, of your support, because it's quite amazing when a community greets a new nonprofit with such open arms. So I just wanted to fill you in.
Well, that's a great, great update, Lisa, and to you and your board, I think speak for all of us, and others probably have comments, but, you know, Cassie's an example of what a volunteer organization can do, starting with a few voices, bringing in more voices, keeping at it, and knowing what there's a need in the community. You know, you're a prime example of making things happen in a responsible manner, and you can see what you guys have done. So our hats off to you.
Thank you so much.
We have comments up here, I'm sure.
And Lisa, I just wanna say thank you for spreading a positive voice for our furry friends, because that doesn't exist all over the country, having just adopted a shelter animal from another section of the country. So, you know, our community definitely embraces their animals, and you're definitely a voice for that, and as is your board, so thank you.
Well, thank you. And, you know, the biggest, or one of the biggest wins, if you will, for this, or what I've learned, is truly when folks have an opportunity to help and to be a part of it, or when they know really what's going on. Everyone is so eager to help, and we're just grateful, so thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Lisa. Thanks to your board. Thanks, Mr. Crittenden, for... Pretty good there. I see you're on your phone, but that's okay. That's okay. And Lucy Lamont. Lucy, why aren't you up there? Good morning.
Oh.
Huh?
Good here.
Yeah, we don't overlook you. Don't worry about that. We know who you are. Okay? All right. All right. I think that we've had a great morning. Kickoff in the morning on special presentations and updates on some good things going around our community. Let's now move into the formal business side of the agenda. We'll take up the consent agenda. Any member of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda for discussion? Board members? I don't see any motions in order for the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of Items Nine and Ten.
There's a motion, and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Carried. Okay. Let's take up Item 12. This is to approve Amendment Number Two to Contract Number 1415-050 with Charles Abbott and Associates. Lee, you wanted... Laura, you and Lee are gonna do this, right? Who's gonna start off? Laura, you wanna start off, or Lee?
You wanna go ahead?
I'll go ahead and introduce it. Good morning, Lee Plamow, Community Development Director. Thanks to Laura for helping us prepare this contract. This is to approve Amendment Number Two to our contract with Charles Abbott Associates, who I'll refer to as CAA. Title Building Permit Services to Revise the Compensation Schedule Related to the Percentage of Building Permit Fees Paid to CAA. So that's what this amendment is about, our fee schedule with them. Basically, we pay the contractors, they provide all our building permit services and inspections for Carson City through contract. We pay them based on a percentage of the building permit fees collected. It's a graduated scale. At the lowest level, the first dollars that come in are at a higher percentage, and as more revenues come in over the month, that percentage goes down. The initial schedule that's in the contract was really developed and negotiated with them at a time when we were coming out of the recession, if not still at recession-level building permit activity. So it was kind of developed with that in mind. But now, since then, the last couple of years in particular, and we've been under contract with the CAA since August of 2014, but in the last couple of years, it's really, our billing's really gone back up to pre-recession levels and revenues. So we spend a lot of time in our paying fees at the higher tier, I'm sorry, at the lower tier, but at the higher fee levels. So in looking at that over the last year, and looking at the services we're able to pay for and provide... pay for and provide for plan review services, I should say, the building fund is an enterprise fund. So, the fees that we collect should be paying for all the services that are provided to the building permits, including not just the building permit review, but other divisions, the fire department, planning, engineering that do permit review. So, when fees were really low, we had to take those out. But as they're coming back, we're able to put some of those back in. And in looking at the fees, as we were kind of back up to these pre-recession levels, we still were struggling to get enough money, for example, to have the fire inspector that is mentioned in here, that now with this savings will be able to put back in and actually provide more of those services and provide them under the building permit revenues. So, the proposal is, as is in your packet on page two, is to reduce the higher level from 60% to 50% and add another level above $100,000 in revenues, which we've collected three or four times each year in the last couple of years, down to 40%. We anticipate, in looking back, it would have saved us about $73,000 two years ago. It's about $60,000 so far this year. And so, we would anticipate something between, savings between 60,000 and 80,000 per year going forward, which as we noted during the budget meeting, which will enable us to put a building, that building, I'm sorry, fire inspector into the budget and add those services, which is going to be a really help to the level of service that we're able to provide right now. Fire in particular was one that, I don't have to tell you this, but fire in particular was one that hadn't had the increase in staffing and we're just overwhelmed by the volume. So, with this action, and I would mention Buster Shoal is here from CAA. He doesn't have a presentation and doesn't plan on speaking, but if you do have any questions, he'd be happy to answer questions. And I'll conclude with that.
Some questions up here. Sylvester Wankowski.
Good morning, Lee. Can you go over the services that you anticipate being able to expand into over the next few years? Like you mentioned that we're adding services as the revenue increases. What other efficiencies or services do you anticipate being added as we continue to expand?
Well, my comment was within the building department. So, I did want to mention, that's one thing about the benefit of contract services. It lends itself well to an enterprise fund operation because it's based on revenue. So, it expands and contracts with the revenues. That's a little bit tougher with city employees than it is with contract employees. So, they have, that's one thing, the benefits, you know, as I mentioned, that the revenues have gone up, so has the activity, so has the needs. They've increased their workforce accordingly to meet that demand within the services they're providing. So, outside of that, speaking only for the Community Development Department, I don't know that there's other things outside of the building permit services that we can do. But I think we can continue to look at inspections and those types of things to ensure that they're expanding and meeting the demands of building permit services under that enterprise fund.
When is electronic plan checking going to roll out?
So, it's in beta testing right now. It's a new product to us. We're just starting to send out plans electronically to the various departments to review. The product, that's the online thing, there's still some, we're in the current phase, is still a training and learning phase to get all the city departments on how to use it. So, it's getting online right now. When it's going to be fully implemented, it should be in the next few months.
Other questions of either Laura or Lee? Public comment? Public want to weigh in on this? Okay. I want to thank the staff and the city manager for, you know, watching this happen and being aggressive to talk with the private side of our public-private partnership on Charles Abbott Associates. Well done. So, board, we ready to take a vote?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve amendment number two to contract number 1415-050 with Charles Abbott Associates, Inc., titled Building Permit Services to Revise the Compensation Schedule Related to the Percentage of Building Permit Fees Paid to CAA.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Carry. Thank you. Okay. Let's take up item 13. This is finance. This is the Carson City Nevada Highway Revenue, this is refunding bond. Nancy, you want to take us through, this is on second reading. Take us through again what we're doing here and what the possible savings or not are for this, if we do this.
Good morning, Nancy Paulson, Chief Financial Officer.
And by the way, good news on the sales tax. I know it came in at 3.9, but the actual collections came in around seven.
Right. Double so. That was great news.
All right. Very good.
So, this is refunding the issuance of highway revenue refunding bonds to achieve interest rate savings. The interest rate will drop from 4.9% to approximately 3% with a total savings for the 10-year period of approximately $415,000. And there was one small change that was included in your late material on page four of the ordinance. The index of revenue bonds should have been referenced instead of the index of 20 bonds because these are special obligation bonds and not geo-bonds.
Okay. No other changes other than that? No other comments after first reading?
No.
These are generally smart things to do, keep an eye on refunding. That's, you know, we're saving 1.9 points on a long-term bond, that's good stuff. So, public want to weigh in? Anybody? Board? Someone want to make a motion?
Ordinance number?
2017-9.
I move to adopt bill number 109 on second reading. Ordinance number 2017-9, an ordinance designated as the 2017 Highway Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the issuance by Carson City of its fully-registered Carson City, Nevada Highway Revenue Motor Vehicle Fuel Tax Refunding Bond Series 2017 for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the city, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds and providing the effective date.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Carry. Thank you very much. All right. Let's take up the next item. This is 14 Alpha. Is that where we are? Okay. By the way, some of us up here, I think three of us are up here trying to learn how to do this on an iPad. I think that's what it's called now, a small iPad. So, if you see us kind of struggling around or typing stuff up here, that's what we're doing. So, we're just trying it out. This is a discussion with respect to recommending the appointment of the chief stormwater engineer, Rob Fellows, to the Carson Valley Conservation District. You want to take that? Anne?
Yes. For the record, excuse me a minute, let me grab my water, I've been coughing. For the record, Anne Bollinger, Open Space Administrator. The item in front of you is to authorize a mayor to sign a letter recommending the appointment of Rob Fellows to the Carson Valley Conservation District. I'm presenting this item to the board because throughout the past 17 years, this position has been represented from open space unofficially. Back in 2000, the city manager at the time wrote a letter to the Conservation District Board appointing Juan Guzman. He served on the board for a number of years. And then, it just passed down to me and then to Rich Wilkinson. And so, at this time, we're coming back to the board for the official appointment to the Conservation District. There have been questions about how do we fit in with the Carson Valley Conservation District. And at the beginning, when it was formed, Carson City was identified in that Conservation District. And every county in the state is in a Conservation District. The advantages to Carson City to remain involved are various grant funds that are only available to Conservation Districts. And then, one of the programs that I really like is the Nevada Youth Range Camp. In the summer, in June, students throughout Nevada have a chance to spend one week at a youth range camp out near Austin. And the students can apply for a scholarship to attend the camp. It's $200. And if we remain involved, then students from Carson City can apply for that scholarship. So, it's a great program.
Very good. Questions of Ms. Bollinger? Anybody?
I'll tell you, this last weekend, I got a chance to see firsthand what these Conservation Districts can do. I took a trip out to Wellington and Smith Valley and looked at the Walker Basin Conservation District where they acquired four ranches, starting with the Hilton Ranch, the Flying Am, and then moving up. It's really rather amazing. And you know, hats off to those folks who get these big grants, work with, you know, the land conservancies and nature conservancies and stuff like that. It's a big deal. So, Rob, this is not something where you just get appointed and go sit. These are things where, you know, we want, we expect things to happen. All right. You want to say something?
No, I'll come up here in case you ask me something.
Good. Any questions of Rob? I know you're a detail guy, so keep your eye on the details, but keep your eye also on the big money.
I will.
All right. All right.
Rob, I just want to say I think you're a perfect fit for this and thank you for being willing to do that. And as the mayor said, fight for Carson City.
This is Rob Fellows. And I will, I will do whatever I can to get those funds and opportunities for Carson City.
I would echo that. I think you're the right person for the job. So, go out and do good.
Public, anybody want to weigh in on this? Public? Anybody? Board? Motion's on, Sylvester Wankowski.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a letter recommending the appointment of chief stormwater engineer, Rob Fellows, to the Carson Valley Conservation District as Carson City's representative.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Carry. Folks, our next one is taking up appointment to the HRC. Why don't we just take a five or 10-minute break here, then we'll come back, get everybody settled up, and we can go. So, we'll be in recess for five or 10 minutes. I know it's a little early to take a break, but let's do it.
That's okay. It works for me.
That comes into play, but when you interpret the standards, it really is a discussion. I mean, there are certain things that you can't do and there are certain things that you can do, and I like to bring that to all my projects. Let's have a discussion, let's just not say no right off the bat. So I have skills, of course. I meet the qualification standards for architectural historian and I do work within the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, very familiar with them, and also know the ins and outs of working with the Building Department in how when you do a restoration project, it also meets certain codes and how we can have a discussion to make sure that we're all working towards the same goal, which is to rehabilitate these buildings.
I want to echo my colleagues in thanking you, Michelle, for applying for this. I love that this community has lots of volunteer to step up for committees, to work with the city and in other areas. My question coming out of the news business is, how do you tell the 30,000-foot bird's-eye view of these stories? You've been talking about narrative stories, you referenced Presidio, which I think is a good metaphor, but that's a very different. It had, you know, a storied past that most people in this region at least know about, and sometimes worldwide. How do you tell the story of the prison? How do you tell the story of the Stewart Indian School and all the other things we have that are historic in this and reach out and get both tourists and people here in the community more interested? What would you bring to bear in HRC on that score?
Well, it is interpretation, it's everything in the context, is what you have to share with the visitors. I did a historic structure report on the Capitol Fence and had an article in the paper done, and it's like, what is the story of the fence? Well, is it just this cast iron structure? No, it's about Hannah Clapp, it's about Abe Curry, it's about what was happening in Carson City, the railroad. It was actually, one of the most interesting things was going to research the newspaper articles, and they had all this detail about going over to the rail station, opening this big crate and looking at the fence, and it was so fascinating. So, the key to interpretation is making it relevant to people. And so, the prison story, what is the relevance to the average person in that story? And the same with Stuart. We had a great workshop where we came up with a bunch of storylines for what could be interpreted out at Stuart that would be relevant to visitors, that would attract visitors to the area. So, I don't have all the answers, but it's just a process you go through when you put together an interpretive plan or an exhibit or a tour even for a historic site.
Okay. Michelle, anything you want to add to your answers or anything?
No, thank you. I have, as I said in my application, and by the way, I just sent you my preservation resume. Of course, I have a whole other resume, I didn't want to bore you with everything I've done in my career, but I have, in Astoria, what happened to get on the commission is that people came and asked you, they found you and said, hey, do you want to be on the commission? And so, I was glad that I was finally able, that there was an opening, I was finally able to apply. I've been wanting to be on this commission for a while, as it aligns with my values.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay.
Thanks.
All right. You guys know each other, huh?
Yes, we do.
It's a small world. It's a small world. Good to see you again.
Well, I told you I'd be back.
You're right. That's okay, too. That's good stuff. So, you know, I ask two questions, and you know, I think, you know, you weren't here, it wasn't that long ago you were here, but, you know, why don't you just, for the public who's listening, just kind of refresh everybody's mind about, you know, kind of who you are, what your background is, and why you want to do it, and then I have one other question, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Tell us, you know, we know a little bit, but I think, you know, get used to, just have at it a little bit, okay?
Well, my name is Rebecca Phipps. I moved here about three years ago. I have a background in museum studies. I've worked, well, I have a bachelor's degree in American history and a master's degree in museum studies, and I have been spending most of my entire adult life working in museums, which have, many of them have been historic buildings, which is where I have really developed an interest in vernacular architecture and then also the preservation of buildings. So, that's that, really.
Well, that leads me to my, the question I have to start off, and that is, I don't know if we talked about this last time, but there are a couple of buildings, this is more than buildings, that, you know, I think are coming to the forefront that we need to pay attention to, that we don't lose sight of, and one is the old maximum security prison out on East Fifth Street, and the other is what's going on at Stewart Indian School, because there's a renewed interest at Stewart Indian School. I'd kind of like to get your, you know, you have, you know, you've worked in museums, what your thoughts are on, you know, because there's a group that wants to create a museum, and they've gone quite a long ways down the road at the old maximum security prison. What are your thoughts on, you know, on how we should, you know, complete those projects? Are they worthwhile? And what are your thoughts on how we take care of Stewart, if we could?
Okay. It's funny you even ask that, because I was just thinking, as I was driving past the prison last night, I was thinking about the museums and the museum going into that. Now, of course, there are other prison museums across the country, and then what I was even thinking in myself was what makes this particular prison interesting that people want to come to? Now, I personally being new, I don't know the story. I do know some stories about the prison with Jacob Van Bocklen, when he was the Provost Marshal out of Virginia City, and there was the prison war that was lasted maybe 20 minutes? I'm not exactly sure, but I'm trying to, what is, what is the interest in the prison? And I don't know enough information. I, of course, want to save almost everything, as I said the last time, and I think it's very worthwhile. What I think they, that group in particular, has to do is really, I'm not, I know last summer, they had some tours out there. What, what is the feasibility study of it? Where are they going to get their funding? Is this going, and again, I don't know anything about this group. I just wonder, what is going to keep people coming to that prison museum? Now, the preservation of it, well, that's, you know, it's interesting. I mean, people, I look at Alcatraz, but Alcatraz has a national, an international reputation. So, I think there's some interesting things that needs, that need to be very carefully thought out about the prison.
About Stuart, what do you think about Stuart?
Well, Stuart, I think is incredibly interesting. Being from Lawrence, Kansas, we have Haskell University there, and Haskell was also an Indian boarding school and has now become a university. So, I'm very well-versed in Native American education. I think Haskell has a lot of potential. The buildings and the story of those buildings, with the students building them and the rock is very interesting. The history is interesting. They do have a lot of people interested in preserving. There's the Stewart Preservation Alliance, and the alumni are all interested in doing that. And the campus itself, I was just out there a couple of weeks ago, and with the rain, the lawn looks incredible. But, there's a lot of potential there.
I appreciate that. John, do you want to start, go on your side this time, let's start off with Karen?
Sure. By the way, Rebecca, I didn't answer this, but I have it with me, and I thank you for the note you sent after the last time you were here.
Well, thank you. You're welcome.
I'm curious as to how you get these stories out. The discipline I came from is using narratives, and in this case, it would be historic narratives, to reach out to the community so that they go to these assets and check them out as we develop them, and to bring in tourists. And the HRC seems to be at a good nexus point for that, but that's not what the HRC has done in the past. Would you tell me how you would bring to the HRC those kinds of skills to reach out? Not just do the duty that the HRC, but actually reach a larger audience?
Well, obviously, coming from a museum background, exhibits are a main avenue of advertising and getting the word out. The HRC, obviously, probably not going to have exhibits, but there could be, in some of the organizations, in City Hall, or in even some of the historic sites that are open, possibly doing exhibits and local house histories there, and then also programs. Now, I know my, the other candidate, Michelle, is very good at doing presentations about the historic buildings around town. I, actually, when I was at Tahoe City, I had Michelle do a presentation about the vernacular architecture of Lake Tahoe, and that was one of our best programs. Now, unfortunately, we had a mechanical breakdown, and it didn't go well there, but she did very well at that, and people are interested in learning about the architecture. So, even if the HRC were to present, have presentations at various sites, that could happen. Also, there's, of course, the Blue Line brochure, where you can add more information or go back and look at that and see, to see how well that is being utilized. Then there's always websites. I know when I'm visiting, when I visit, I always, visit a city, I always go to the Visitors Bureau, Visitors and Bureau, Visitors, you know what I'm talking about. What is, Visitors and Conventions, whatever.
They took Convention out of it, so it's just the Visitors Bureau now.
Okay. I always go to the Visitors Bureau website, always, for anywhere I'm going. And so, having a page on that website discussing the Blue Line, doing some, talking about the preservation of Carson City, some of the activities that are going on, and of course, then getting into the Visitors Guide, yeah. Podcast, I haven't gone into podcasts, but that could be interesting, too.
Thanks for coming again.
Yes.
So, can you tell me what specific skills that you have, that you will utilize on the HRC committee, if selected?
Well, that, well, in particular, would be research skills, depending on the issues that come forward. Certainly, my research skills would benefit that, and knowing where to go to find more information. My knowledge of history, and my interest in history, that would help, and then also just experience that I've had in various museums. One of my museums was an 1888 building. We were struck by lightning, and our red slate roof was destroyed, and so, I also know where, there's only one source in the United States of where to find red slate, so I know where to find that, if that should ever come up. And, just a passion, you know, so, yeah.
Good morning, Rebecca.
Hi.
I have been a longtime advocate of expanding the historic district to include the historic properties on the east side of Carson Street. So, just wanted to get your thoughts on that, on a possible expansion. Do you think it's worth it? Do you think it's not? What do you think about the east side historic buildings?
I very much agree that the east side should be included in a historic walking tour. I, again, I'm not sure that everyone is even aware that the east side has a long history. There's a couple of buildings that I walk by there, when I take my break at work, I walk by and I wonder what it is and why it's there and how it's, how it's been adapted for use. So, I would very much be interested in expanding that to the east side. Yeah, and there's a lot of places on the east side that don't exist anymore either, so having, having a history of what was there would also be interesting.
Hi, Rebecca.
Hi.
On the west or east side of town, is there a specific building or area that you would see as worthy of preservation or protection for aesthetic interest or value or significance to Carson City's past, and what would you like to see there?
Well, last time, we talked about Jack's Bar, and after this interview, I've been thinking about Jack's Bar quite a bit, and the question was essentially, when does it become not useful, I guess, or doesn't warrant preservation? And I got to thinking about that as well. Jack's Bar, while I love that, there's not much that, from on the outside, that I can see that is still original to the building. Like, the floor is gone, the interior is gone, and then how much, so then you're preserving the outside. So then, how much of that really then remains as that building? So, those were the things I was thinking about. Then I'm also thinking about Datsalali's House. I drive by that a lot, and I know it's occupied, I don't know if it's a rent, a rented occupancy or if it's owned, the people that live there own that. That is a type of preservation project that is not the elite, saving the homes of the elite, and I think that would be a very interesting project to do, because Datsalali, she was one, she's the world's most collected basket weaver. She had an interesting life, and it's, and then the context in which she lived is so very interesting, and it's all in that house. And I think that would be something very interesting to save. And then, of course, the Abel Coens House, just in front of that, might be kind of, I mean, interesting. And then I'm also very interested in the downtown and that, and then the east side, like I said, you know, I go by these buildings all the time, and I wonder what they are. There's one that looks like a big gymnasium. I'm not sure what it is, but I'd like to know more about that building.
It's the old armory.
Old Armory, okay. So, I want to know more about the Armory, and I'd like to see it, to see it preserved and part of our history. Yeah.
It's a fascinating discussion. I mean, I'm, you know, some interesting comments on Jack's Bar. That's fascinating, what you just said there. And Datsalali is buried at Stewart, you know, and I should have known that, I probably did at some point in time, but, you know, I think her gravesite out there needs some work. So, if anybody's listening, I know Sherri Rupert's on board with that one as well. And when we talk about the prison, it's not lost on us that we have, one of our employees here, her father was warden at that prison out there, Jen Budge. So, you know, it's a small world. Very articulate, what you said today. You want to say anything, any, anything else?
Well, I very much would like to serve on this. I would very much like to serve on this commission. However, Michelle is ideal, and I would not, I would think that choosing Michelle would probably be very wise, and that I would not be hurt, and I will come back again. So, that's, I mean, I'm very-
Well, you know, you're to be commended for that, because I saw you talking, and, you know, I think Supervisor Bagwell mentioned, you know, what skills you bring, and when I listened to that answer, and it was from both of you, and it's really rather amazing, you know, we sometimes, you know, for these jobs, all of a sudden, we get people who are almost overqualified for them, because they have so much to bring to it, and then, you know, we say, you know, what do you do now? And, you know, so we appreciate the fact, you know, that you're willing to talk about Michelle like that, and I'm sure she would say the same about you. But, you know, it's, these are tough decisions, and so, we appreciate, I think, speak for all of us, we appreciate what, you know, your comment there, so, all right. Anything else, Board? All right. Now you get to hear us kind of debate and whatever we're going to do, so, you know, you've been through that drill before. You know, I, this is one where, you know, I got, I just probably said it all, you know, they both come with some impeccable credentials, and, you know, if there's one thing that stands out, I guess, you know, and I think Rebecca, to me, pointed that out, is, you know, Michelle's been around and done a lot of these things already, and Rebecca's been here three years and is working, and she's, her being here only three years, you have an amazing ability to understand what this community is all about and what the resources we have. So, you know, there's a little bit of me that says, you know, the length of time is there, but I'm also kind of torn, you know, where, you know, because it's obvious that you put in a whole lot of time in figuring out, you know, what assets are out there, so I have to think about how I'm going to go here, how's that? Anyway, anybody want to start, since I just took a pass?
I want to know if we can appoint both of them. Yeah, I know. Unfortunately, we cannot, and I appreciate what you had to say with regards to Michelle. I mean, I know Michelle's background, and so, it's tough for me, and I, the difference being, I think she's had experience in, Michelle's had experience in the Building Department and so forth, and knows the ins and outs, and can't be bullied through the process. And I think that's important right now, because in dealing with certain facilities, as in Stuart, as in dealing with the prison, no, she invites discussion, let's put it that way. So, my vote would probably sway to her first, but I want you to come back.
I will. But for the time, right?
Well-
You're all right, Karen.
Well, Rebecca, you need to be on this commission. First, you had to go up against Mike Drew.
Yes.
Now, you're up against Michelle. Keep coming back. I've got to throw my vote to Michelle. I really appreciate you making this decision easier for us, but just understand that you have the qualifications. I think everybody up here wants to see you on that, so don't give up.
Well, I'm just going to say here, I bet I'll become irrelevant, but I like your passion, and nothing against Michelle, but I would go for you, but I bet, I bet I'm not going to get to. But, you'd get my vote, we'll see however we go here.
Well, I just want to say that I kind of agree with what John just said. It's a real tough spot. Do you go for the specific skill that you think someone brings to the position, or do you go for the overall passion that someone brings to the position, and which one would actually further the goals, objectives, and duties of the HRC? And so, I'm really torn, because I think you would bring just an absolute bright light to this entire process of historic preservation, but I'm looking through what the actual duties of the committee are, which is the buildings themselves within the historic district, and whether or not the application meets the codes. So, based on that, if it was a commission that would do all these other things, like the prison preservation and Stewart, it would be easy for me to pick you, because I think you'd shine that light on the projects. But since this is actually the technical position for approving building applications, I'm going to select Michelle, and I hope that, thank you.
I agree with that. Because Michelle, she's been in historic preservation, she's a historic preservationist, so I completely understand, and if I were in your position, I would choose her, too. So.
John's looking, all right. Karen, Supervisor Ray about?
I move to appoint Michelle Schmider to the Historic Resources Commission in the Historic Preservation category for a term expiring February 2021.
There's a motion, a second on a motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signal, we say aye. Aye.
I'm going to join and make it unanimous, but for obvious reasons, come back.
Yeah.
When does the historian position come up? Because surely I can get that one.
There you go.
Rebecca, we haven't seen somebody as gracious as you are and as articulate, so.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. All right, folks, that wasn't difficult enough, and now we'll take up another one. We have, the next one is 14 Charlie, this is Appointment to the Cultural Commission, and we have, I think, Guadalupe, because Valerie, did Valerie take her?
With Drew.
Valerie with Drew, so we have two. We have Guadalupe Ramirez and Kurt Meyer. Morning, Guadalupe, how are you doing? Good to see you. So you know how these things go, since you're here, listen to us a little bit, right?
This is my first time here, so bear with me, I'm a little nervous.
Don't worry, you know what? Yeah, don't worry, but just turn that mic on when you get ready to speak. Don't worry about being nervous, there's no right or wrong answer up here, okay? Or there either, so, and, you know, we're all, we're all members of this community, one way or another, elected or not, we're members, so you don't worry about that, all right? All right, so, why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself, and then I have a question for you.
Absolutely. My name is Wada Lupe Ramirez, I also go by Lupe. I have been here in Carson City for 31 years. My husband and I got married here, and we started a family. We have a daughter who's 16 years old, and I work at Western Nevada College as a Latino outreach coordinator.
Have you had an opportunity to read the cultural master plan?
I did not.
Okay. That's the only question I had, so, that's, all right. Lori, go.
Go ahead, I like it. Will be different today. Okay. Thank you so much for applying, I really appreciate it. I'm wondering what your thoughts are if Board members from the Cultural Commission should help fundraise, and do you have any recommendations on how to increase funding to that committee?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's definitely important to raise funds to have events for our diverse community. I know that our Latino community is large here in Carson City, it's about 25%, and I see that they are hesitant about participating in events, and so, I think it is important to keep in mind that we need to be creative in getting them out to, you know, be part of our beautiful community, and so, any type of event that the Board or the commission can provide, I think it's definitely very beneficial.
Good morning, Lupe.
Good morning.
My question for you, in your opinion, which should be the primary focus of the Cultural Commission? Coordinating existing arts and culture organizations, funding public art exhibits, or something else?
I would say coordinating existing cultural events. I did review the mission of the committee, and I was very interested when I looked at the duties listed, which is celebrate city for its ethnic diversity, and that instantly caught my attention. I think it's important that we remember that we have a diverse community, and again, I think that it's definitely important to seek for creative ways to get our Latino population to be part of it, to, you know, integrate into what this beautiful community offers everyone as a whole. I am often out in the community, I do attend events, because I like to draw my students that I work with at the college to be part of these events. I help them, you know, get engaged and volunteer in activities, so that they can actually get a taste of what it is to be a member of this community, and then I also include their families, and so, that's one way that I can, you know, remind them, we are part of this community, let's engage, let's enjoy, you know, what these, you know, organizations are providing us. you know, um, organizations are providing us.
Hi, Lupe, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Um, what type of Latino cultural events would you like to see promoted? We, we don't engage enough, and you're right about that, and so, I'd like to see what your vision is for, for expanding what, what we haven't really taken on yet.
Thank you, thank you for the question. Um, I believe an event such as Cinco de Mayo Celebration would be one event that our Latino community would be, would be participating in. I see these events happening in Reno, and I see the, the, you know, um, large population attending, our people here from Carson go there. I think it would be wonderful to have them, um, attend that event here in Carson, and, you know, feel that this is their community, this is what, you know, where they should participate, and, and, and I think it would actually contribute, you know, to the business as well, so I think it would be one way to, um, you know, um, reach out to them, and again, offer that to that population.
Guadalupe, again, as my colleagues said, thank you for applying. Name your two top reasons in your, uh, pursuit of this. What are your two main reasons, both personally and professionally?
I'm sorry, the question again, please?
The two top reasons you've applied for this position on the Cultural Commission, both personally and professionally?
Absolutely. Personally, because I have gained a lot from, um, being a member of this community. Um, my daughter, for, for example, she has benefited a lot from everything that, um, she has been engaged in. Uh, she plays sports in, in, in school, she has also played sports, um, in other organizations in the community, that has helped her to, uh, grow and to be a very, um, uh, strong, you know, young woman. Um, she is a very confident young lady that has, uh, really taken on, um, her, um, educational endeavor very serious, and it's thanks to that involvement that she has, um, been part of and that she has benefited from. So, that is my personal, uh, point. My, professionally, I would definitely like to, uh, continue promoting higher education to the Latino community. I know that we still, um, have a lot of, um, work to do to encourage our students who are graduating from high school to continue onto college. Um, they come with a lot of barriers. Coming from that background myself, I know how to overcome those barriers and how to help them, um, attain a college degree.
Thanks, Lupe. Anything you wanna add by, in conclusion? Anything you wanna discuss?
I just wanna thank everyone for this opportunity, for this invitation to come and, and apply for this position. I am, have always been, um, passionate about, um, helping others. Um, I feel that there is a lot of, um, a lot of need to advocate for our community, and I wanna offer my, um, my services and my, um, expertise in any, any way I can. Um, I think my bilingual skills also will be an asset that I can, um, contribute, you know, toward these efforts that the Commission is, you know, focusing on or working toward. Um, that would be one, um, one, um, skill that, that I feel is important, so that the way we can communicate with our community. Um, I am very connected with, um, my Latino community, I, um, participate in church, we have a large, um, a large, um, uh, group of, of individuals who attend church every, every Sunday, I see them there. I support our local Latino business vendors as well, making sure that I stay connected with them. Um, I, I, um, basically pretty much, you know, feel comfortable in both cultures, in my Latino culture and in my, uh, work environment and in, in the community as a whole, and that is one of the reasons why I'm so passionate about bringing my community to, you know, enjoy, enjoy what Carson City is all about, and, and feel that they are part of our community and contribute.
Well, I think, uh, you know, regardless of what, how, what we do here today, your effort at integrating the Latino community and is, you know, you hear me speak as one community all the time, and, and I believe that wholeheartedly, and I think, you know, that's the message that I'd like, you know, that's, that's a good message for me. Uh, and so, it's good to see you here, uh, applying, so, we'll see where it goes, okay?
Thank you so much, and I do have one question.
Sure.
Um, how long is this commitment, um, for this position?
January of eighteen.
January of eighteen.
Okay. And when will this position be starting?
Now.
No, okay.
Today.
And, and what is the, um, time commitment, uh, required?
A lot.
That's the first question, fundraising.
Let the supervisor A about answer that question then.
Um, Lupe, we, it varies, I have to say that. Um, we had a larger time commitment, because we, in this past year, the Cultural Commission developed a master plan, and now we're developing the rules and regulations for judging art, and so, there were, there was time commit with regards to that. There will be splintered committees to be on in terms of various, uh, arts and culture events and/or judging art, things of that nature, so, it just varies. It's not, um, it's not overly demanding, it's enjoyable, and, um, we're working forward to bring something to the community that, that really hasn't had a, a unifying force, so, this is exciting, with our new Arts and Culture Director, um, Mark makes it a pleasure, so.
That's one thing I forgot to mention, is that we have, I have a working relationship with Mark, he went to, um, speak to my students up at the college, and, you know, he was very welcoming in his message and getting the, the kids out to participate, so, I just wanted to mention that for the record. Um, I also wanna mention that I am, um, asking about the time commitment for a reason. I am working toward finishing my, um, bachelor's degree, I have two more classes, and so that definitely has been a, um, a, a major time commitment besides my full-time job, so that's why I wanted to find out what it was required to, find out if I am able to, um, meet your needs.
Well, just to answer that, since I have three jobs, you'll be fine.
Thank you for the vote of confidence.
And if not, I think we know Chet Burton well enough to tell him, cut you some slack, so. Alright, thanks, thanks, Lupe.
Thank you.
Get to listen if you want to, hang around, okay?
Thank you so much.
You bet. We have one other applicant, Mr. Kurt Meyer.
I know, I was just like, really?
Morning, Kurt. How'd you do? Did you ride down here on your bike, or did you?
Yes, sir, I did.
You did?
I rode without a helmet, Nick. But, but it wasn't hanging from my handlebars.
That's pretty, pretty good. Hey, Kurt, uh, you know, you've been through these before, but, uh, let me just say, you know, uh, it was, uh, you know, we've known each other a long time, and you're my neighbor, and, uh, thank you for applying, for doing this stuff here, so, uh, why don't you talk a little bit about, you know, you know, how long you've been here, who you are, a lot of people know, but just give us, get a feel for, you know, and why you wanna do this, what, what, what do you think you can contribute to the Cultural Commission? And then one other question after that.
Okay. Well, um, my name is Kurt Meyer. I've worked in Carson City, well, I worked in Carson City for twenty-five years, um, at the Parks and Recreation Department, retired last year, was lucky to do that, uh, lived in Carson City, um, for over fifteen years, like Bob said, right, right over by him. Um, I applied for this position because I, I find it, uh, a very good way to put a lot of my time to good use, to, to give back to Carson City. I'm a true advocate for volunteerism in Carson City. Um, a very long time ago, I complained about Little League, and somebody told me to shut up or put up, and I haven't stopped since then. I'm, um, volunteering on lots of different boards and commissions, I'm currently on the Clock and Caroline Commission, the YSA Board, and also the past president for the Boys and Girls Club. And I feel that the Cultural Commission is a great way to use a lot of my passion for the arts, and also create a community, um, through art and through public art and, and events and so forth, that will keep youth in Carson City. Also, um, I, I have two sons that I completely and totally adore, I'm afraid, I love Carson City, I'll stay here as long as I possibly can, and I want this to be a place where they come back and raise their grandkids. And I feel that that generation, and those two, those two gentlemen in particular, value those types of things, and it's very important to have a community like that. So, being an example to my boys, here I am, putting my, putting my money where my mouth is, so.
Alright. Uh, the, the question I have is, have you had a chance to look at the cultural master plan that we've adopted?
Um, I, I've read through it, yes.
Okay, what do you think about that?
I think it's a great, great step forward for Carson City. Um, I think having Mark here and having those tax dollars come in from the Visitors Bureau and so forth to support him is, is just tremendous, and it's a great step forward for Carson City.
Alright. Brad, you wanna?
Good morning, Kurt.
Good morning, Brad.
Long time no see.
Yeah.
Um, my question, Kurt, is, in your opinion, which should be the primary focus of the Cultural Commission? Coordinating existing arts and culture organizations, funding public art exhibits, or something else?
I think the Arts and Cultural Commission is built on all of those aspects, uh, putting one over the top of the other is, um, is probably not favorable to anybody on the Commission. I thi- I feel that, uh, having, having a band playing next to a piece of art that we just displayed would be the ultimate goal of the Arts and Cultural Commission. Um, so, does that answer your question? They're very, they're both very much important, so, and I can see the value in all of those, and getting those people support that they need to continue to have the music, the plays, and so forth in Carson City is very important, and I also feel that having public art and having people come to work in the morning, riding their bike or driving their car, and experiencing that public art, truly, uh, when they get to work, they, they hopefully will make more thoughtful decisions, so, you're welcome.
Good morning, Kurt.
Good morning, Karen.
Um, there are gaps in our cultural embrace, and what Latino cultural events would you like to see promoted in our community, and why?
Hmm, that's a good question, gaps in our Latino cultural. Um, well, I think that, uh, we can specifically target things like that. Um, I understand that, uh, there, there's a lot of heritage here in Carson City from that, and, um, just starting off with, with things that the Arts and Cultural Commission and pushing forward with those as far as that goes, and getting part of that community involved, and asking those questions to them would be integral to that, so we could get those answers and build on those, so, you're welcome.
Kurt, give me your top two reasons for doing this, and make one of them personal and one of them professional. You may have already answered the question about personally, because you mentioned your, your offspring.
Uh-huh. So, would you repeat that question?
Sure, your top two reasons, and make one of them personal and one of them professional. I understand you're, I don't know, I don't wanna call you semi-retired, I mean, you are what you are, but, you're a volunteer at this juncture.
Yes.
But those are the two, two things I'm curious about.
Okay, on a personal note, um, I, I, I truly think that we can market Carson City in, in a more youthful light through arts and culture. I feel that, uh, some of the, uh, some of the jump, some of the people that are currently investing in Carson City downtown and so forth are coming from places that have a rich culture, a rich arts scene, and I feel that, uh, that would benefit other people investing in Carson City in that way, and I wanna, I wanna have it to feel good about the art here in Carson City. As far as professionally, I'm, I'm, I'm not really a professional in, in any aspect, I do a little bit of part-time work here and there as a substitute teacher, and also I work for Epic Rides, so, um, I wouldn't know how to answer that question, so.
Hi, Kurt, thank you so much for applying.
Thank you for interviewing me.
So, what I'd like to know is if you think the role of a board member would be to help fundraise, and then, do you have any recommendations on how funding could be increased?
Um, I think that, I think that through, the, the way I work is, I'm, I truly am a, a project-oriented person, get-it-done kind of person, and if the Cultural Commission had a goal or an objective, and, um, I was assigned a, a subcommittee as sort on that, I would find a way to get that done. Uh, so, through grant writing, through matching funds, through things like that, um, the money is out there, and I know that we could acquire it, and I also am sure that, uh, no project would be too big for, for me to go, go after, so, I have a track record of that, and I do get things done, so, thank you.
Kurt, anything you wanna add by, in conclusion? Anything?
Um, I, I don't think so, I've interviewed with you guys before, and, uh, thank you very much.
Well, we wanna thank you for applying, and, um, I wanna thank for your service to your community over these many years.
Thank you, Bob.
It, you know, not only as an employee, but, you know, it's not lost on us about, you know, baseball and Boys and Girls Club and stuff like, those things take a lot of time, and, uh, there's, there's no doubt about your passion for the community, so, well, on behalf of all of us, thanks, so, we'll see where this goes today, it's hard.
Okay, thank you. Would you like me to go sit?
Yeah, you can sit around.
Yeah, this is really a tough one. Uh, we, we, I thought the last one was tough, this is even, even tougher in some ways, uh, because we do need outreach to a quarter of our population, there's no doubt about that. Um, not a negative, but I was, uh, I was cognizant of the fact that, um, Guadalupe said she hadn't had a chance to look at the master plan, and she had a time commitment question for us, uh, and I'll just be honest, 'cause I don't know how I'd be anything else, my question regarding, uh, the professional side of it is, I happen to know Kurt, you ran for mayor before, so I was curious as to whether he had future plans along those lines. I'm always looking for the five agendas that we all have for whatever we do, uh, but I'm gonna have to go with Kurt, because he has the fundraising background, and he has read the master plan, and the fact that, uh, that Guadalupe is working on two things, she probably will have time to do this, and I hope she applies again, but Kurt will get my vote because of the, the master plan and, and the fact that he has a long, uh, commitment, but I really, uh, more in the loss of the opportunity to have a conduit, uh, on board for working with the Latino community, we need to do more of that.
Well, I, having served on this commission for six years, I know there is a gap in our cultural embrace, and that's why I asked that question, and it, the time has come, I feel, to bridge that gap, and, uh, Guadalupe brings that connection with our Latino community, she also brings that connection with WNC, which I think is important to this commission, and it's what we need in terms of expanding, if we go in, into fundraising at some point. I think, I think it put her off a little bit when Laurie asked her the question about fundraising, because it takes a lot of time, we know that, but I also know that busy people get things done, so, for those reasons, I'm gonna vote for Guadalupe.
Okay. Well, I, I think this position has the same issue as the last one, is to which skill or which, um, objective is the most important for the committee itself. So, as I look at the role of the Cultural Commission, I, I ask the fundraising question for a reason, because I think that you need board members that recognize it is not going to the board meeting once a month and spending an hour, that will not, um, expand arts and culture in our community, and so, I'm with John on the part that I was disappointed that Lupe didn't read the master plan, that bothered me a lot, because it's like, if this is your role, and where is it going? But she brings an opportunity to fill a- So, I think that right now, the gap on the commission is the most important, so I will vote for Lupe.
This, for me, has probably been the most difficult decision between two candidates that I can remember. I would say after hearing both of them interview, they're, based on the interviews, they're virtually a tie. So then I have to go to the tiebreaker. And in this particular case, going back to Lori's comments, I think the tiebreaker is that Lupe has the direct connection to the Latino community, which is a gap in our cultural plan. So, I had to go really deep on this one. So, I think I've got to go with Lupe on this one.
Even though I can see, you know, John and I are irrelevant on the vote in a way. But, you know, Brad, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, Kurt, you know, we ran a race for mayor, and we both, you know, we both know this community very well. And he was a great opponent, and you can't beat his passion for what he wants, you know, for his community. And I've seen him operate on the Boys and Girls Club, and I've seen him operate in the baseball area. He's a good person, and he gets stuff done. But, you know, at the end of the day, I guess, you know, the integration of the Latino community is important for us, I think. So, that's kind of where I'll go, I guess.
Can I echo that? As I did the last time, make it unanimous. My reservations on each side notwithstanding, I think they're great candidates, and I wish again that we could put them both on. But when we take the vote, I'll vote with the majority on this one, because I think she'll make a great commission member, and I think Kurt would have too. And I hope he comes back.
All right. Go ahead.
I move to appoint Guadalupe Ramirez to the Cultural Commission's Citizen-at-Large position for a term expiring January of 2018.
Can I just ask you a question?
Just a general question. I understand that the Cultural Commission often, you called it splinter, but they work like maybe you're going to assign one or two people to do the special events. And so, I'm wondering if you guys can keep Kurt in mind to put on any of your little subgroups. Because I think he brings so much to it and his passion.
I'll give you an example. And the various committees that we have, and let's say it's judging art, you have to have people with various levels of expertise. It's not just us. So, we appoint other people. And so, that will be an ongoing thing, depending on what the scenario is. Yes, and I would agree.
Okay. Let's see, where are we on the agenda here then? Let's take up 15 Alpha. This is the second reading, amending the encroachment ordinance, the encroachment permit ordinance. Good morning, Stephanie. How are you?
Good morning. For the record, Stephanie Hicks.
Any changes from the first reading?
There are a few changes that we did want to bring to your attention. And Dan Yu, our deputy district attorney, apologized that he wasn't able to make it to this meeting, and also, due to a schedule conflict, missed the first one. So, there's a few things he just wanted me to go over with you. He apologized profusely.
Tell Lern at Hand, the mayor wants him back. Okay, thanks. All right, go.
So, just a few things. One item that was added since the previous reading was an ordinance summary that was included on the beginning of it, it was an oversight from previous drafts and something that is required according to NRS, so we did include it in the second draft. Additionally, on page seven of 13, the ordinance provided language that clarified our discussion that had to do with signage on the tables, and we've added that to both the ordinance as well as the guidance document. We did submit something to you as late material, and Dan wanted me to go over this with you as an option. One of the discussions that we had with the board at the last meeting was some clarification on the tax issue and whether there would be some reimbursement if there was a special closure, for example, in the case of a flood event. And initially, we did not include clarification language in the second reading as submitted to the board. And the reason for that is per NRS 261.157 and NRS 361.2275, it's unnecessary to state that a permit holder will not be reimbursed, because NRS provides that the taxable value in the interest or use in the encroachment permit is for the length of time a person has possession of it, or the right to the property which is independent, durable, and exclusive of rights held by any other person other than the rights of the property owner, which would be the city. So, in other words, the permit holder is taxed for as long as he or she keeps the permit. And so, initially, we did not include that. However, Dan did want to provide to you an option of language which was included in the late material, and wanted to let you know that he is in support of either option, whichever pleases the board.
Why don't you talk about the options?
The option reads, just for clarification, that notwithstanding any prohibition on the operation of an outdoor dining area or the use of an outdoor merchandise display pursuant to subsection one, the holder of an encroachment permit is not entitled to a reimbursement or apportionment of any tax assessment for the period of prohibition for so long as the permit is maintained.
Okay. Adriana, this is a second reading. Can we rule, can we do anything with those options at this meeting?
You did have late material, so there was some opportunity for the public to be able to take a look at the added language. If you feel more comfortable having another reading, you could do that. Also, this is in statute, so statute supersedes, and anytime it, you know, changes, you would have to change this provision. So, you do have the statute to rely on if you didn't want to include the additional language. I feel comfortable going forward with, if you wanted to go with the added language in the code, because there was an opportunity for the public, having been notified of this meeting and the actual subject matter that was going to be before you, even though that language specifically was not provided until whenever the late material was provided.
All right. All right. Brad?
I had asked for this language to be included. Generally, I like more clarity rather than less clarity in our ordinances or statutes, because it's not just the lawyers that are going to look at this in the future. So, if somebody who holds an encroachment permit, if the city tells them that they can't use that area for a certain period of time, for whatever reason, in the future, now they can go through and read this, and they can see right off the bat that they are not going to be allowed to come forward and ask for an abatement. So, it's very clear. So, my preference is to go with the option of including that language. I would also prefer that we go back to first reading on this, just out of an abundance of caution, so that the public does have the opportunity to come back at the next meeting if they have input on this and provide that. So, that would be my preference.
I agree with Brad. I'd be much more comfortable, I've talked about this in prior situations, I think we need to have three readings or however you want to talk about it, going back to first reading. I also want to apprise this board that at the RAC a couple of nights ago, there was an issue that is in, we put it in limbo and are moving it on to the Board of Supervisors as a RAC group, and it's a request for things that would be done. I don't want to get into the details of it, but things that we've done in an encroachment area. And it raises questions, so I'd like maybe to talk about language that we could add or not add, and it has to do with serving things that would then be taken off the premises.
I would concur with John's comment. I'm aware of that, and I think it's a gap that needs to be identified. And in our effort to get this right, since we're launching something new here, I think that it's important that we bring this back. And I do like the clarifying language. It needs to be explicitly clear.
So, I like the additional language, because I believe that clarity helps everyone. I think it has to go back to first reading, just because we also didn't publish the summary. And I would hate to find that there's a glitch in the rules, that we only did that on the second reading and not the first reading. And then, I guess we need to have the discussion concerning the potential for food cart services within the encroachment areas, because in this permit, we were very clear that the types of items, that there'd be no paper. And I guess that's, we need to be sure this is where we want to go, because I think that then determines cart services that could be allowed within areas. So, if you're in an encroachment area, if we want to stick with the encroachment permit, then they need regular dishes, and I don't think we should be inconsistent that the person in the encroachment has to have the nice stuff. But if you're, you know, a foot away, you can do paper. So, I think we need to have this discussion before we finalize where we're going. So, again, it's clear to everyone.
Okay. And I'll just make a comment, because I think we will go back to first reading and take a look at it. But I, too, am in favor of the option. I think, even though the statute covers it, even though I think we could vote that today, and I agree with Adriana, we could bring it back and see what it is. I personally, I kind of appreciated the ability to, kind of the lack of paper, because I think that's something that is, you know, could get out of hand in our community. And so, you know, if that's a discussion we're going to have, I'd let people know that, you know, I come down on the side of, you know, let's don't have paper in those encroachment areas. That's my two cents, so. Brad?
I guess my question then is, should we go back to a first reading today, or should we wait if you're looking for additional clarity and additional language that could potentially be added? Because then we're back into the same position again.
Actually, it depends on whether or not we want to allow paper. If all of our opinion is that the encroachment areas will not have paper plates and things like that, then this can be a first reading and we're done. It would solve the issue for what RAC was perplexed over, is to whether or not we want to allow food carts that are more, I would say, temporary in nature, and they're going to serve a wrapped hot dog that someone's going to eat. And so, do we want the strict interpretation that we placed in here? And if so, then we can go to first reading. If we want to relax this for food carts, then we, so that's the discussion we need to make, and that'll tell us which way to go.
I'll weigh in on that. And I don't want to precipitate garbage, and that's the problem. And when you have a scenario like that, you know, you're done eating it, you've got little kids eating it, it gets thrown, people don't pick it up. I mean, it is what it is. You're allowing for a problem. And quite frankly, the plaza is the size that it is. You've got wonderful establishments that are right there that you can access that same sort of food product, and I really don't know that this is necessary.
After all the time we've spent on this, I don't really have any interest in relaxing anything at this point.
Then I'm okay, then this can become first reading, because I concur. But I think, again, it helps RAC understand the mix between.
You can't, you have to renotice it as first reading. I mean, you can't have this hearing be first reading.
Plus, there was.
We'll bring it back, right, as first reading, next time.
Yes. First on the 20th and second on first, adoption on the first, with all the changes.
Is the language in everyone's view clear, that no paper products can be on? It seems that way to me, but it didn't seem clear to the people on RAC how it was going to turn out, the encroachment. And that's part of the problem. These things are crossing in the night, shall we say, where we haven't finished the ordinance, and people are already, you know, trying to move forward.
I think part of the issue is, we have carts allowed in the mixed-use development standards.
Exactly.
But we didn't put that in the encroachment permit. And so, I know part of the discussion is the encroachment permit will take precedence, because it's a finer detail. But I still think it's important on the record here that we're discussing, so everyone's aware, even though the development standards say you can go to RAC and ask to put in a food cart, that we're being clear through the encroachment permit, so everyone knows we intend not to have paper in the encroachment areas.
Well, and the encroachment permit pertains to the downtown. And so, we're not disallowing food carts, just not in that location, because we were very specific, it was thought about, with regards to paper products. And so, you know, in other areas, sure. But in this particular area, there's only so much space, and there are plenty of restaurants and more coming. So, I just don't feel that, you know, there's the need for this in this particular area.
Well, just to bring up, not carrying anywhere's water, and again, I don't want to go beyond the scope of this discussion, but it was brought up that those other food carts in nearby locations would be competitive. But that's just, you know, it's just the way it works out.
I have the light on up here from clerk recorder. Who's light is that?
[laughing].
All right, all right, all right. So, then, Adriana, do we need a motion to take this back to first reading with the addition of at least the tax information?
You could revert it back to staff to bring it back on the 20th for first reading without making a motion?
All right. Unless there's an objection by the board, then we'll ask the staff to massage this with the tax language. And I know this is coming back and forth, but I think supervisor A about it makes a good point. Let's get it right. And, you know, sometimes these things happen like this, so. All right. So, unless there's an objection, we're going to give it back to you, bring it back on the 20th.
Absolutely. And I did have just, I had a question for you, but I also had one other item that Dan wanted me to bring to the board's attention.
Not allowed.
In regards to the question, I'm kind of hearing that as far as the food cart or the paper products, we're talking about the plaza? Or are we talking about other areas on Carson Street as well? Because we could formulate some language, but I just want to make sure.
The idea is on the encroachment permit, wherever it applies, wherever it applies. Okay?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
In reading this, I was a little confused, and perhaps that's my fault, but under health standards, it says, "Three, the use of disposable food containers, utensils, and napkins is prohibited." That's clear. "Unless the food or beverage is served or packaged in a manner to be consumed off-site as carryout." And that's, I think, the gray area that I'm raising as a question here. As I read the ordinance, I thought it was clear, but I can understand how anybody, somebody else might say, "Well, then I can do that, and they can carry it away." And that would create stuff all through the downtown. Let's say they walked out of the plaza and went on down the street and dropped it where there was no container. So, I want to be sure that language is as clear as we can make it, because, you know, food carts are usually mobile in the encroachment area. It wouldn't be.
Thank you. We will clarify.
Before we move that back to you, is there members of the public going to weigh in on this one? Anybody? All right. So, there's no objection, so, Ms. Madam DA, I'm just doing without a motion to send it back to staff, bring it back on the 20th with the changes we've talked about here today. I think you have a pretty good idea of where we want to go.
Absolutely. And just one last item.
Another one?
Sorry.
That's all right.
I was given my bullet points. Dan, again, he apologized for missing the first meeting. He wanted me to advise the board and place on the record that there was some direction from the board regarding language, providing that any person who issued an encroachment permit agrees to abide by any future changes in code relating to encroachment permits. So, if something changes further down the line when we review this, we were stating that the permitee That's all right.
I was given my bullet points. Dan, again, he apologized for missing the first meeting. He wanted me to advise the board and place on the record that there was some direction from the board regarding language, providing that any person who issued an encroachment permit agrees to abide by any future changes in code relating to encroachment permits. So if something changes further down the line when we review this, we were stating that the permittee agrees that they would, they would have to meet those changes. That was left out of the ordinance but remained in the policy document. And the reason for that was, on the advice of the district attorney's office, it was felt that the provision should be removed because it could cause mischief by leading to an unintended problematic consequence. And as Dan explained it, he said, you know, there, NRS currently says that if there are changes, if there are legal concerns in forcing a person who applies for any business license, even a privileged license, to agree to forfeiture of any right to challenge the validity of a future regulatory requirement. It essentially could create an inverse grandfather clause, was his opinion, in that by saying it, in this case, it may open up the argument, whether it's valid or not, that other instances didn't say that, and so therefore, they don't have to meet the new requirement. So he just felt it was a loophole that we didn't want to open for, you know, potential future argument. And he did want that to be on the record for the board to know. That was why it was left out of the initial reading. Thank you.
Okay. Got it. Understood. Anybody, any other questions? Thank you. Tell Dan thanks, too. Good. All right. All right. Let's take up 15 Bravo Epic Rides. Who's going to do the update on Epic Rides? Mr. Pittinger?
Patrick Pittinger for the record, transportation manager, Public Works. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board of Supervisors, I'm here just to give you a brief update, informational only, on the Epic Rides Carson City Off-Road 2017. We're in the second year of a five-year, three-party agreement between Epic Rides, the city, and the Carson City Visitors Bureau. And I'll mention that representatives from those groups are here today in case we need them as well. The second year event will be held June 16th through 18th in Carson City. That's a Friday through a Sunday. That's next month, about six weeks away from now. And we've been in the planning stages for several months now. This event will be bigger, as per the agreement. This will be a bigger event than last year. Last year, we were limited to 600 riders. That's what we had. And this year, where we will have up to 900 riders. They actually have about 750 registrants already. So it'll definitely be a bigger event this year, as expected. We've been meeting on a monthly basis for the last several months. And I won't go into great detail, but I'll mention that just about every city department is involved in one way or another. And I very much appreciate the participation of all the departments and all the different efforts that have to be undertaken as we go through this. We do, we did have a very successful event last year. We actually won a national award for domestic off-road mountain bike race of the year. You know, obviously for the country. And we do have a few things that we want to try to improve this year. And the only graphic that I have is the one that was included in the packet and is up here on the display. And that is what we call the crit course, the criterion course. This is the, this is the course that's the basis for all of the rides, the starting and ending point for all the rides. Of course, most of the riding is done up in the hills. But on Friday afternoon and on Sunday morning, this course is what's used for on-street races. On Friday afternoon, it's used by the professionals. It's also used for what's, they call it the clunker crit, which you don't have to be professionally enter. And it's also used on Sunday morning for a kid's ride as well. And when this, and when those races are going on, this is a closed course. So there is definitely a traffic impact to this. But working with Epic Rides, we've made several improvements to this that will help us reduce the impacts on the neighborhood, on the traveling public, and also improve the experience for the people that come down to watch the event as well. So the improvements that we've made, it's actually a smaller course, so there are actually less homes and businesses that are actually included within the closed area. We are not on Mountain Street, which, as everybody knows, that travels on the west side. Mountain Street is a very useful north-south road. Mountain Street will remain open. So that's also helpful just for the general traveling public. We've also modified the southern end of the route because we wanted to minimize the impact on the churches that are located down there. While there will still be some impact, we think this will, this will really help out in reducing that impact to them. The result is the two-way traffic, as you can see in the middle on Nevada Street, which we think will actually lead to some excitement. We're going to put barriers down the middle of the road, and there'll be two-way bicycle racers going down, going down the street. So that might be a prime viewing spot for this, in addition to other places like the start-finish line. Those little green stars there denote where, for residents, we will have two locations that are staffed so that if someone needs to get in or out, and is a resident, we'll have those staff to allow people to go through when there's a safe opportunity to do so. The southeast portion of this, right in front of the Capitol Building, is the, is the main portion of the start-finish line where they'll have, they'll have concerts and the like. That will be closed Friday through Sunday, Friday morning through Sunday at 5:00 PM for the big festivities down there. Let's see, what else should I point out? The public noticing for the event, we're trying to enhance that this year. We're working with Rachel Schneider, who does a lot of good work with social media, and with the Visitors Bureau, and with Epic Rides to make sure we improve that. One of the things we're going to be doing is later on this month, we're going to make some enhancements to the city website to improve that. We're going to have mailers that go out this month to impacted folks. And as well, this year, something that we're going to do is we're going to have a public meeting on June 7th at 7:00 PM at the First Presbyterian Church, 306 West Mustard Street. And the public is invited to come to that. But the people living in the area, we're working with Lee Plummel and Community Development to make sure that we specifically invite people that are located within this area. Let's see, that's June 7th. And then the final thing I wanted to point out was that due to the heavy snowfall, which is wonderful for our water tables, it makes it a little hard to ride up on those hills when you've got six feet of snow, even on a mountain bike. So the course has been altered, and the final details are being worked out. But basically, what's going to happen is that for a 15-mile ride, it'll be the same as last year, no changes. But for the 35- and 50-mile rides, the riders will start here in downtown, they'll travel up into the hills, but they'll end up basically doing laps. So a 15-mile ride would just do one lap like they did last year. The 35- and 50-mile rides, they'll end up doing two or three laps. And that means that, yes, they'll be coming through town, and we'll have to have stations to make sure the bicycles can get through. But once again, for the spectators, you'll be actually able to see how the racers are doing as they come by. And when I say their laps, you know, realize that, you know, the second and third laps are 20 miles apiece. So it's not like you're going around a little circle. With that, I will take any questions.
Any questions? Patrick? I'm glad you're taking care of the churches.
I do want to comment. I just want to thank everybody on the committee for the, taking into consideration the concerns of the residents last year, getting, finding their way around, because that was probably the only complaint that I heard. So that's great. And I, just a question, does Epic Rides ever consider some of the courses on the east side at all?
I don't know that they have done so to this point. I mean, I think that, obviously, there's an impact of the snow, and they're confident that they're providing a quality ride this year again. If somehow we get another miracle snow next year, we can ask them if they want to consider that. It'd be a matter of, you know, getting there from, hopefully from downtown. But we can discuss that with them. And I just want to give a little credit to Epic Rides as well, you know, Kurt Meyer. You know, there are a lot of different people to work with, a lot of different moving parts. We had folks in the Capitol Police yesterday talking about the governor's mansion, and he's working with Linda Maroni with the farmer's market. And there are a lot of moving parts in there, so a lot of, not to keep track of.
Yeah, and you don't have to get too specific, but I'm curious about medical health, ambulance, blah, blah, blah. You're obviously preparing for all that, those kinds of things that can interact.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We've, the, just the meeting we had yesterday, of course, the sheriff's office is involved, the fire chief, Chief Slayman. We had a, we had a meeting with Public Works staff, Epic Rides, Kurt Meyer, and just Chief Slayman, just to get them up to speed. They're actually going to have medics on mountain bikes stationed on the course. Actually, having less terrain up on the hills is easier to deal with. But we also have search and rescue as well. And we're going to have the health department involved manning a station near the finish line. So when, John, when you finish the race, there'll be a tent right there for you.
I may need it.
Yeah, and I'm just going to echo Karen's comments. I would love to see the Epic Rides organization look at taking the route over to the east side. I mean, I can see them going up into the Ash Kings Canyon area, maybe getting up to the rim trail, coming down on Hobart, going under the highway, and getting over on the Go-Night, going up over the top into the Virginia City foothills. I mean, that is an awesome ride. And it just showcases some more of the trails. Frankly, I think it's going to get stale if you just do the same ride every year.
Yeah.
Well, Epic Rides is here to hear that as well. Thank you for sharing.
Okay.
And just as a comment, I was at Open Space Parks rec meeting the other night. And certainly, the Centennial and the mountain biker groups from Carson City are looking to do some trail work. And they've really done a stupendous job. So you might want to look at the Eagle Valley Trails website. They have mapped all of these. They've, Joel's laughing, smiling at me over there. But I think there's some opportunities to really showcase the community and the other trail systems that are available. And they've done a super job already cataloging all those for you, so you wouldn't have to look it up.
All right. Public input, anybody want to weigh in? Anybody want to weigh in out there? Okay, I don't see any. This is a non-action item, right? Presentation only? Okay. Thanks to the Epic Rides folks, thanks to the Visitors Bureau, thanks to RTC guys and everybody else there. Good work. And I echo the comments about Go-Night Canyon. I'd read, I'd say Brunswick Canyon's a good one, too. Maybe not in Carson City, but it's a good, it's a good run. All right. Board, what's your pleasure? You want to take five minutes real quick before we hit the stormwater, or you want to just push through?
I can take a break.
All right. We'll be in recess for five, five minutes, 10 minutes, and then we'll come back and we'll hit the stormwater and go from there. All right.[1320.42] All right, we're going to bring the meeting of the board's questions back to order. We're now at item number 15. Charlie, this is to adopt a report or consider the adoption of a report from the Chair of the Utility Finance Oversight Committee regarding proposed stormwater rates dealing -- and the UFOC had this before them on March 28, 2017. We have the Chair of the UFOC here today, Andy Engelmann, who's going to provide that report. Good morning. Sorry, Andy, we're a little late, but...
For the record, Andy Engelmann, Chairman of Utility Financial Oversight Committee, and yes, Mayor, that's 15 Chanel. We're not all military.[581.16][581.16][laughing] Anyway, thank you. So first of all, I want to compliment you, Mr. Mayor, on response to Ms. Tingle's remarks this morning. I think what people forget is that one of the reasons why we had to raise the water rates the way that you did was because for so many years, the rates had not been raised, and that's the problem, is that we're also playing catch-up. And so, and that's been difficult. It's been hard on the public. And I know I was reading 2004 Minutes the other day when Mayor Ray Maseko was there, and they were discussing whether or not to raise the water rates and the stormwater rates and so forth, and they never took action in that meeting. I have no idea whether they ever ended up doing it or not, but, you know, so this is a problem that's been with us for years, but one of the reasons we have the higher rates now is because we're playing catch-up. And our committee was formed in order to help give the public a little comfort and a little feeling of credibility that we are watching this money, that it is not being misspent, that we're going to be as thrifty with it as possible. So let me first try to answer a question that Supervisor Barrett asked me a couple of weeks ago, and I was unable to do so because of the agenda, but now I can. On March 13, Dave Burkettis sent me, with Public Works, sent me a proposed agenda for our meeting on March 28. At that time, I answered him, that was the first I knew that we were going to be talking about a stormwater rate hike. At that time, I asked him, how could we vet a proposed rate hike in this meeting along with the budget? I was very much concerned about the time element, and asked him whether or not there would be choices. I was not given any information as to what the rate hike would be. I did ask for choices. I asked if there was some way we could perhaps cut something somewhere. I was thinking if we could cut a dollar out of the sewer and then raise the stormwater by a dollar and balance it out that way. How much would it raise their proposed rate hike? How much would it raise the monthly water bill? And shouldn't there be a public hearing on this? And that I would like to hear other suggestions, other than what I thought was coming from a consultant, because I knew nothing. I also asked if I could sit down and meet with them. That was denied, and I was told that all of these things could be discussed at the committee meeting. So consequently, when we got to the committee meeting, there were no choices. It was just staff's proposal. At that point, I raised the issue of a choice, and I think their proposal was for $2 and some odd cents and $2 and some odd cents. My concern was that we're having a 6.5% rate hike July 1 on the water bill, and any additional rate hikes on top of that, I felt, might be a little bit burdensome to the public. So I suggested a $1 rate hike, and then a $2 and a $2. And while that brings them, in the long run, a little bit more money, still, there's no doubt about the need. We've all seen that. We saw this this past year with all the flooding. Clearly, we need to do something. We did have a couple show up who was concerned about flooding in their area, which I believe was the Empire area, and on the list of projects that we were given, actually, that's at the bottom of the list of projects, but they're tired of the flooding. And I think if the public could hear some of these stories from some of the public that were damaged by the flooding, who've had to put up with it, and that's why I believe in a public hearing, where everybody can get up and have their say, and then I think everybody buys in at that point, and we work together. And so then there's not so much, they're doing it to us, as it is, we have to work together to solve this problem. So we did discuss this for about an hour and 15 minutes. The committee was overwhelmingly in favor of the rate hike. They were overwhelmingly opposed to a public hearing. I think it's because some of the members have been through public hearings on different projects in Carson City, and they haven't always been very pleasant. So, you know, for some of them, there's not a good feeling about having public hearings. But in any event, after much discussion, we came up with a motion that I will read to you, that to recommend to the Board of Supervisors and to consider a stormwater rate increase in the amount of 25% the first year, 35% the second year, and 35% the third year, to support an improved citywide stormwater program and to further our goal of meeting the goals of the financial policies. And that passed unanimously. We then amended it first to put an effective date of budget year 2018, which would be this July, starting this year.
Those are some big percentages, but I, so I think it's important to talk about what the actual dollar rate is now and what it would be with adding a dollar. I mean, so if you have that information, if not, we'll call it.
And I agree with you, sir. The engineers like to talk percentages. I like to talk dollars. So we're talking, for a single family, we're talking $1, $2, and $2 would be the percentage. Then I think you have the other for the commercial, and the multifamily, and the public, and manufacturing are there in your packets, so...
And did your committee take a look at the rate study that we did? I mean, I remember, you know, when we put, when we did this rate study for water and sewer, we also had stormwater in it, and we didn't go down to stormwater one at that time?
No, excuse me, sir. The stormwater was not included at that time. And the stormwater, what staff told me is that they were going on the basis of a study that was done in 2003, which is, of course, 14 years ago. While some people feel there haven't been many changes, I think 14 years does bring changes in Carson City, and so, you know, so that was it. They didn't want to involve the consultants. They were hoping to save money, which I believe in, so... But rate design does call for cost studies, and what we were not given by class was the cost of service. And that's what your rates are usually based on, is the cost of service.
We've got a couple of questions up here. I don't know whose line, we'll sort of, Brad, you up, and then Karen's.
Hi, Andy. How much time did the committee spend discussing a potential rate study, possible changes in the rate study from 2003 to now, different types of development that have changed, and the specifics of the rate study, in particular, the user classes? Because when I look at the user classes that we're currently working off of, they seem more like a political compromise than based in fact.
Very little time. Essentially, one of the board members said that he had been involved in the study back in 2003, and that not much had changed, and felt that it was the same, and so the other members more or less accepted that. No information was forthcoming from staff. There were, the study that might have been, or that I guess was done in 2003 or 2004, was not provided to us. So we never saw what the basis was at that time, but, and there was no discussion as to the various classes. Most of the, because of our limitation of time, most of our time was spent on looking at the residential. One of the members said that the commercial rate was going to be high for him, but that's, but he could, he said he could afford it. So, you know, that was good, but there was, there was no input.
So my major concern is that when I look at, and first I'll say, I'll preface this by saying, by agreeing with you, that there's no question about the need. So this is not a question of, do we need increased revenue to come up with some solutions to our storm drain system? That's a given in my mind. My questions have more to do with the equitability of our current system. And I go back and I look at the rate study, there's very good information in that rate study, but what we ended up with does not reflect what was recommended in that rate study. So my preference is that we spend the time to give storm drainage the same attention that we gave water and sewer, and do it right. That we need to have a consultant come in, we need to perform a rate study that starts with looking at the user classes and allocating properties correctly in the user classes. When you look at what we're doing right now, approximately 90% of the parcels in Carson City are classified as a single-family residence. And then you have the commercial side, which I think is paying too much, because it doesn't give me a definition of what a commercial property is. So I'm looking at, say, one of our West Side office properties, I'm going to give a plug to the West Side for once today.
Thank you.
Which has basically the same impact as a single-family residence. Is that classified as commercial, or is that classified as single-family residence? It appears it's classified as single-family residence, but I don't have the information to show me that. Multifamily, is that a duplex, or is that a 200-unit apartment complex, or somewhere in between? We don't have that information, so I think we need to start there. We need to determine what are appropriate user classes, we need to determine what the impact to the system is by each one of those user classes, and then we need to allocate the costs over those user classes, so that we do this equitably. And we can do all of that. What it means is it's going to take us a little longer to get to the solution. So after some discussions and some suggestions, you know, I think that we have the ability to have a win-win here, that we can, we can discuss and maybe approve the initial rate recommendation, the 25% increase now, which allows us to start planning and implementing some improvements. At the same time, we can maybe take the next 12 months and do the rate study through a consultant and do this right. My concern is, or my fear is, that what we're looking at, proposed here today, is exactly what we spent three years trying to correct in water and sewer, which is putting a Band-Aid on a system that doesn't work to try to get along. And I don't really have a lot of interest in doing that.
Well, I would concur with Brad on this, and this is a study, the previous study that was done is close to 15 years old. And Andy, in your discussion, was low-impact design discussed at all? And any break for anyone doing that?
No, it wasn't, and that's common in other states and so forth. They will give a credit, for instance, to a commercial place that has more grass than one that's all hard surfaces where the water runs off.
Okay, well, then, I, you know, I have to disagree with the fact that we don't need another study done to identify the cost of impact on the system and rate people accordingly, rate establishments accordingly with regards to that, because things like that aren't considered. We have a low-impact design that we've given lip service to, but no legs to. So I think this, implementing a study would help do that. I also think that streets and stormwater should be combined. In reading the notes, reading your comments, they're doing that already for efficiencies. And I think in terms of letting the public know that, that it should be a combined scenario, different light items for different things, but you're, they're combining their efforts and their manpower with regards to that already. So to me, I think that needs to be all part of this.
Thank you, Andy Zengelmann, for your service on this. This committee, as you have already mentioned, was put, set up by this board, so that we can look longer into the future, something I advocate whenever government structures like this are involved. And as you recall, as you said, I asked a question, and what I was trying to get at at that time, and you were proper to shut me down, and I said I didn't want to get candy wampus of the open meeting law. Why, was it discussed in your Utility Finance Oversight Committee, going five years instead of three, which is what we did in sewer and water?
No, actually, that never came up.
Nobody, nobody said anything about it all. What's your opinion on that idea? If we do this, what Brad seems to be suggesting is one year and then look forward, would it lower the cost, the cost impact on our users?
Feeling of the committee was that the sooner we did this, the better, because the public would remember the flooding that we had, and that the longer we wait to start doing these things, then the memory would fade, and people would complain about their stormwater rate going up and say, well, you know, we not have, we didn't have a flood this year, so why do we have to worry about it? So there was a lot of feeling of, we need to do this as soon as possible, because the public will buy into it, because they will recall it. And my concern was a rush to judgment.
And I'm going to commend you also on that. You mentioned that your committee, which is a creature of this board, wasn't given a lot of advance information. And in another context, in a much smaller matter, I have said to our Public Works Director, I would like to have three options rather than one, et cetera. And so I think we're on the same page on that. Do you have a view on that regarding staff coming with more than one recommendation and laying it out beforehand?
Well, I too like choices, but, and I like to see the benefits, and I want to see also what the problems may be. And so one plan may be better than another plan, and staff may agree that this plan is better, and therefore, that's the only one they want to show you, but maybe I want to see what the other plans are, and let me make the decision, because I might see something they missed. And so that's why I like choices. Some people feel that choices might confuse the issue and just make it harder to make a decision. So that's my viewpoint. That, I mean, I believe in choices.
So what weight do you think we ought to give the recommendation of your committee?
[laughing] Is that a trick question?
Somewhere, I mean, it's a committee that's made a decision. What I'm hearing, but I'm not, you know, what am I supposed to do with it? Because you're kind of saying, well, we didn't have enough information, but the committee's obviously said something different, so I'm just kind of trying to figure out.
Right.
You know, what's happening here?
As Chairman of the committee, I'm here to more or less tell you that this is the recommendation of the committee, this was the unanimous decision of the committee, for your consideration. The fact that it's for your consideration means that you can lend it as much weight as you like, or as little weight as you like.
Anybody else with any questions?
Yeah, one more question. What do you think of, this would be personal rather than for the committee, if you can answer of Brad's suggestion of one year and do a consult. I agree with you, the consultants aren't always my favorite way, but if you do it better, even though you have to spend some money to do it better, I would, I would fall that way. How do you feel about that?
Knowing the people on my committee, if you ask them, they would say, let's just do it. But from my, my personal point of view is that I think Brad is, Supervisor Bonkowski and Supervisor Abat are correct, in that if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Let's be certain that we're not just putting a Band-Aid on it. And as I say, there, this is not how, I've been involved in rate design at the Public Utilities Commission. That was for electricity, for small businesses. And water rate design is a little bit different. This is not, what we did is not how you do rate design.
So two things. I guess we're kind of combining both agenda items, because this one is to accept the report or not accept her report, and so from the discussion, it looks like we're combining both items, just for clarity. So I did a little bit of research on rate structure, and one of the things when I looked out, there is an organization that gets reports from all the different stormwater utilities, things like that, and 79% of those used the impervious area, which directly relates to stormwater, so that it, the benefit and the cost, and those that are paying for it is reflective of what actually happens with the stormwater. So I think we have to give the rates justice. We have to be able to explain to all the different rate classes how we got the answer for them. And so I'm not, I'm not comfortable with just accepting, two things. I'm comfortable with accepting the report, but not implementing the report. That's two different things. And then I'd also like us, before we look at increasing the rates, it's imperative to me that we've done everything we can to me that we've done everything we can to look at other avenues. So Supervisor Aboud suggested we move it to streets. The other option is to move it to sewer. Different entities put it in different places. It's about equal when I went out to look at where people put their funding. And part of the objective that I'd like to see is an evaluation of our sewer rate on how it's hitting the targets. Is it exceeding the targets? And if it is exceeding the targets, could we lower that rate? I don't know, 50 cents or a dollar, and move that into stormwater? So that's the other issue I'd like to, to make sure that we've done our job before we just pass on rate increases to the public. But I think even the public recognizes we need to do something in stormwater. And so...
Well, let me ask you this, Lori. I mean, Andy made the comment about rates being subject to cost, all other things being equal. I tend to agree with that. But so when you start taking, when you start saying, "Well, we want to move money from sewer to stormwater," to me, that rings a subsidy bell. I mean, because we're taking, we're taking, we're not basing it on cost. We're just taking from one, from Peter to give to Paul. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how you, how we get there on that one. And I don't know that we can go at this, at this time, I guess we could, make a direction that, you know, we're going to consolidate divisions, but I think that, that requires a longer discussion. You know, and I'm also a little concerned that, you know, you'd be careful what you ask for in this rate study. Because the parameters that you're giving them, you know, today, you know, I don't know, you know, I should say this, but I'll, my suggest, my, my bet is, if you give, if you do a rate study, your rates are going to come back higher than what they've just proposed, higher. And, and that puts everybody in a, in even a more difficult position. I mean, and I think that's, you know, and the other thing is, you know, there's, there probably is a subsidy built into the existing rates, no doubt about it. Got to be careful when somebody says, "Let's do it on based on cost," because that subsidy's going to go away. Somebody's going to get hurt, and hurt bad. So, you know, frankly, all other things being equal, I don't mind a rate study. Doesn't bother me. I, you know, you and I've been through them. I've been through them hundreds of times. But I would just caution, you know, one, be careful what you ask for. Two, don't tie their hands on what they can, you know, what they can come up with. Three, if you, if you really want to say no subsidies, based on cost only, make it very clear that that's what you're going to do, and then be ready to bite the bullet.
We don't necessarily have to combine it with any other fund, and I'm not recommending that the sewer subsidize it. What I'm saying is, we need to ensure that the sewer rate we implemented with its five-year process is not overperforming. So kind of what Hope said this morning, it's like we never look at something to see if we could reduce it. So the question could be, is the sewer rate overperforming for the reserve funds than what was in the rate study? And so my suggestion was, we just take a moment to look at it. And if the answer is no, it's, so let's say that the rate study said to put, the ratio for coverage of debt was supposed to be 50/50. Well, maybe we're running 100%. We're way ahead of the game. And if we are, should we back that off 50 cents and move that 50 cents to stormwater so that the rate payer at home, while it's in a different fund or a different purpose, they don't see their bill increase? That's all I'm saying, is we need to take a moment to look at it.
Yeah. I, I, I got that. I just, I won't argue that point on rate design, because I just want to go, Brad.
So I'm usually very hesitant to micromanage the committees that we put into place to make recommendations to us, because they're there for a reason. I have the utmost respect for the members of your committee. On the technical side, they know 1,000% more than I will ever know about these subjects. But in this particular case, you know, it's a situation where I adamantly disagree with the conclusion, however they got to that conclusion. And I think that then it does fall on us to step in and say, "As much as I value your input, I would like to see us go in a different direction for these reasons." And in this particular case, my reasons for that is because when I look at all the information, which you didn't have, and your committee didn't have, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, there were a lot of political influences that shaped where we currently are at. You look at the rate study, it uses impervious surface. That's probably the best method. But once they set that method, they didn't fund it according to the recommendations, which invalidated the whole system. So all I'm saying is that I like to do this right. And I understand what the mayor's saying. Be careful what you wish for. This might come back and might tell us that we're not getting to where we want to be. But I want to have that information, one way or the other. At the end of the day, I want to have that information so that I know that the decision that I'm making up here, on my behalf, representing the citizens of Carson City, is the right decision for today, for five years ago, or five years from now, and for 50 years from now. And so that's why, you know, I really am, am going to be as insistent as I can on going down the path of a new rate study.
Okay. Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? All right. I think we can take a motion to accept the report, and then we'll take up the next one on the next agenda item where we want to go with this.
Okay.
All right.
I move to adopt the report from the Chair of the Utility Finance Oversight Committee regarding proposed stormwater rates from the March 28, 2017 meeting.
I would ask, I would ask that you use the word "accept" and not "adopt."
But accept the report, right? That's a better word.
Yeah. On the motion, discussion, anybody? On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed nay. Carried. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, you and your committee for all your hard work. Thank you.
All right. Let's take up business impact statement. 15 Delta, what would you call that, Andy? If it's not, if the last one was Chanel, what would you call Delta?
Dior.
Dior. 15 Dior, okay. 15 Dior, all right. All right, all right. Who's going to, who's going to take us through this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Supervisors, Darren Schultz, Public Works Director. 15D is the possible action to move forward with the business impact statement on stormwater. After our, prior to the discussion we just had, I'm, I'm not sure, it's pretty clear to me that that's not the direction we want to go. So I just wonder if, in terms of our presentation here today, really, if we should just go through with it as planned, or if it's, in one way, a bit moot in terms of the direction that we're going to be giving. So I'd like some direction on that.
Well, now that we're on this one, if we take a motion, we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
I mean, because I agree with you. I mean, I agree with you. We're, you know, if it's going to get pushed off, then we don't need to see this today. So motion's in order.
I would move to direct staff to bring a presentation back to us reflecting a 25% increase in the storm drain rates for fiscal year 2018, and implementing a rate study to examine all aspects of our current rates, user classes, and impacts from those user classes on the system, so that we can make an informed decision about where to go after fiscal year 2018. I would leave that up to staff to, to include things like low-impact design credits and so, so I would assume that actually the consultants would include that as part of their study. So I'll direct staff to make sure that the consultants include that.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. On the motion, discussion, John?
I do want to pin that down, impervious surfaces, user impacts, all the rest of it, because this is a much broader topic than just what are the rates. I've lived in four state capitals, and state capitals have more government roofs than you can shake a stick at. This one, less than others. And, you know, design of parking lots, all the rest of that, we need to look at it. And that may cost us a little more in the consultant, but as you say, it'll look out 15 years instead of five or three.
I'll be voting no on this, because I don't understand the logic of saying, "We need a rate study to find out where we are," and then saying, "But we're going to put 25% one in immediately, regardless of what that rate study shows." So, you know, you know, we're either going down the road of a rate study or we're not. So my preference would be, you know, if you want a rate study, don't put anything in until you know where you are. But that's why I'll be voting no on this motion.
I'm going to echo the mayor. I don't want to put in a 25%, I agree with them. We're either saying we need a rate increase or we want to wait for the study. And I still want to look at the other funding sources and options before we automatically put a rate increase on July 1st. So I'm going to vote no. I can go with the rate study portion of your motion if you leave out the 25% increase. I mean, like you said, it's one or the other.
Did I violate the old meeting law?
No, I'm just looking at the, the way that the, the item is worded. It's pretty narrow. So if we're going to make a motion, let's try to work with how it's, how it's stated on there, which is to adopt, or to direct staff to complete a business impact statement and bring forth the changes to the municipal code to facilitate the Utility Finance Oversight Committee's proposed stormwater rate plan.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that, is that, well, we need to hear where this motion goes, because part of this motion is, is bring back a business impact statement with a 25% increase the first year. So we need to know whether that motion goes up or down. I mean, so they can decide whether or not to do a business impact statement. So then we'll take up, if that fails, then we'll take up the next thing, and probably the next thing is just say, you know, come back with a rate study.
Further discussion?
City manager.
Mr. Mayor, I know this is at the board right now, but there is going to be a significant cost to do a rate study of what this board sounds like you want now. I'll defer to Darren, but it sounds to be well in excess of $100,000. We would largely eat up, even if you don't do that first year, I would bet we would eat up most of that revenue just doing this rate study.
That's correct. For Darren Schultz, for the record, for a rate study that we're talking about, I'm going to say ballpark $200,000, $250,000. So the current fund, stormwater fund now, cannot afford that. So there, if you, if the direction is to do a rate study, we, we have to find funding to do it, just, just in itself.
On the motion, further discussion?
Yes.
Discussion's in order.
Darren, do you remember what the cost of the rate study was for water and sewer?
All said and done, it was between $200,000 and $300,000.
Okay. Thank you.
John, do your light on. Further discussions in order.
Thank you. I presume you're correct in your estimate, because stormwater, we've already bought in ideas that, you know, are more than just rates, and we want to look at that. So, but again, I, I think, Lori and the mayor make good points regarding why not to do it, but the city manager's probably made the best point. Either we're going to do a rate study, we got to pay for it, or we're not going to do a rate study, and we fall back. So I'm going to vote accordingly, because I think we need a rate study.
Can I ask, when's the, when's the last time there was a rate study on stormwater? So don't we have one that gave us recommendations that we didn't follow? So I really think this item should be tabled, and staff should have an opportunity to even go back and look and dust that off. We may be able to follow the last rate recommendation or study.
We, so the, the last study was done in 2002, 2004. That's what was referred to earlier. So a committee was formed, a rate study was done. There was a plethora of options that were given in terms of exactly how you want to set this up and charge who what. What was it, five, five different options with eight different sub-options per five? That's how broad it was. That was brought forward, and this is all after, Mr. Proketa went through all the many minutes of what's happened. That was brought forward to, to this body, and the decision was made that we need to start the stormwater program. That's the right direction to go, but we don't know yet as to how we're going to fund it. So they adopted to do the program, to start with 50 cents, and that's, that's basically where it left off. So when we came forward this time around, with recommendation from the Utility Financial Oversight Committee, we used those same assumptions what they adopted in 2004 in terms of who pays for what. The only thing we did was we trued up the true cost of money, what we need to make this a successful program. So we, that's how we backed into it. So that, that analogy that was done back then, we just moved that forward 15 years and used this same methodology in terms of who pays for what share.
I really, I really appreciate, again, how do we, so part of the issue is, if it's going to cost you $200,000 to get $250,000 in rates, then it doesn't make sense to spend $200,000. So do you think it would be of benefit for us to look at the other study and draw conclusions? I think what I want to do is just feel comfortable that the tiers are accurate, and that we, you know, it wasn't done for political reasons back then, probably was.
It absolutely was. And that's, that's our, that's our discomfort with, with trying to bring that forward to you and explain it, because it, it doesn't, it's, it's so broad, and how they came to the determinations of where we ended up, we, we don't know, nor is it on the record. So we can't, we can't bring that forward and present it to you.
No, no, no. I meant the study itself, just the old study that we could review.
Well, we could, but once again, it's going to give you 40 different options.
All right.
And we're not prepared as, at this level to explain, I mean, that's where we feel like we would need a rate consultant to come and talk about the pros and cons of all of those different things. We're, so...
Brad?
Kathy, can you read the motion back to me?
Move, move to direct staff to bring a presentation to the board reflecting...
That's fine. Thank you. So I didn't include a business impact station, statement in that motion. So going back to Adriano's comments, I'm going to withdraw my motion at this time, and then we can decide where we want to go.
I think we should table this item and let staff have an opportunity to rethink the process and give them time to think about it and present us with a different option.
Anybody want to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the subcommittee? Anybody want to make a recommendation to accept the recommendation of the committee?
Proposed.
Okay. All right. Unless there's an objection, we will table this matter, come back with whatever you think is appropriate. And I don't know what that is. I have no idea what that is. Because I, and I'm not trying to be snide about it either. I just don't know what, I mean, come back with the recommendation on a, just come, we'll table this, just table it right now. All right. Anything further come on this item? Or not? We'll take up item 16, support of Supervisors. Are we all ready to quit?
Public comment?
Public, well, before we get to public comment, we're all going over at 1:00. So we'll be there, I don't know what the seating arrangement is, but let's get there a little bit early. So we'll get there about quarter to 1:00, and then we'll go from there. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Everybody got their blue lights going? Everybody got it? All right. City manager, what you got else?
In the interest of time, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do is, next board meeting, I'll do a very comprehensive legislative update. That'll give the board enough time to transition, get over to that law enforcement memorial.
I just had one question in the legislative. Can you tell me where the marijuana, retail marijuana, are we going to have choices to allow it, or are we going to be forced to do it by the current legislation?
So I think we're, I, I think... So I think we're, I, I think there's two big items that are being looked at right now. One is the regulatory authority of the, the Board of County Commissioners, and the other is going to be revenue. So to get right to the heart of your question, Supervisor Bagwell, you are going to have the ability through land use, through zoning, to either zone in or zone out retail, or what most people refer to as recreational marijuana. Where I think we will end up with what the Department of Taxation is calling "quick start" will be that the existing medical dispensaries are going to be able to apply for a retail license. They will also be able to use the same exact storefront, the same exact facility that they currently have for medical, and use it for retail as well. So you would have the ability to either zone it out and not permit retail, or zone it in and allow those, you currently have two medical dispensaries, and you could, if you chose to, you could still have the two medical, and in the same storefront, they would also have a retail license. That's where I think it's going to end up in terms of zoning. You could zone out any others that currently don't have a medical dispensary attached to them. And I think, you know, at least at this point, you would be on very solid ground from a litigation point of view if you did that. Either way, if you either zone them out entirely, or only allowed the existing medical dispensaries to also pursue a retail license. The taxation is up in the air right now, where, where everyone from the county and local government level is driving it, is to, for retail, for a 15% point-of-sale excise tax. 10% of that would go to the state, 5% of that would go to the counties. That would be in addition to the current state sales tax of 7.6% here. So we could end up, if you did zone in retail dispensaries, where the, the retail sales would have an effective county rate of 7.25%. That's the 5% point-of-sale excise tax, and our 2.25% share of the state sales tax. Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
No, sir.
John. Anybody? Are we ready to adjourn? If I take, follow, public comment? Concluding public comment, anybody? Speak now, or forever hold your peace. All right. Then unless there's no, absent, absent objection, we're adjourned as the Board of Supervisors. See everybody over at the Fallen Off Memorial, the legislative grounds, at 1:00.